Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December thirteenth Planning Board Meeting of the City of Jersey City. If we could come to order and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance. All right. Thank you, everybody. Cam, could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, all right. One second while I fix my screen. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December thirteenth, 2022. This is a Jersey City Planning Board Meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held via Zoom as a video conference open to the public. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on December ninth, 2022. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Here.
And Chairman Langston. All right, we have five commissioners. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Bridget, can we swear in the stop, please?
You swear or affirm that the testimony or comments you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Cam, let's go over correspondence. We have a number of items carried already tonight.
Yes, we do, Chair. So we have six items that have requested to carry to the first meeting in the new year. So that would be January tenth of 2023. So the six items that have requested to carry with preservation of notice are, starting with item nine on the agenda, address is 511 Newark Avenue, preliminary and final major site plan, carrying to January tenth of 2023. Item eleven on the agenda, it is 100 Tours Avenue. The case number is P22-153. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to January tenth of 2023. Then flipping over two pages, item twenty-one, that is case P22-141. The address is ten to fourteen South Street. They have requested to carry to January tenth of 2023 with preservation of notice. And then immediately after that, item twenty-two, case number is P22-149, address three sixteen Forest Street. Their site plan amendment, and they've requested to carry with preservation of notice to January tenth of 2023. And then on the last page of the agenda, item twenty-four, case P22-163, that is address thirty seventy-nine JFK Boulevard. That's for a preliminary and final major site plan. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to January tenth of 2023. And then item twenty-five has requested to carry to January first, January tenth as well in the new year. Yeah, January first would be a bad meeting day. So item twenty-five, case P22-176, that is address seventy-two to seventy-six room. And they have requested to carry to January tenth, 2023 with preservation of notice. So we have six items requesting to carry.
All right. Thanks, Cam. So if anybody from the public is here to hear any of those applications tonight, they'll be on January tenth of twenty-three. You will not receive new notice. This is the notice. So with that said, let's get into new business. We are going to call item ten on the agenda is case P22-082 is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one sixty-nine Culver Avenue.
All right, promoting Chuck Harrington.
How are you tonight? For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, my witnesses tonight will include Dennis DeVino and Carolyn Wurstel. So I don't know if they've been promoted yet, but if Cameron could bring them up as well. And then before giving a brief overview, I just note that this is a notice case so that I ask that they have been reviewed and marked into the record.
Thank you, counsel. I'm in receipt of the affidavit and notice proof of mailing with respect to the case P22-082, one sixty-nine Culver Avenue here in the city. We've had the opportunity to review it. The notice was scheduled for the November twenty-ninth hearing. We carried it through today to today's hearing. All does appear to be in order, Mr. Chairman, so we can mark that as a one for the record.
Yeah. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, the project before tonight, just as maybe as an administrative matter, it's the agenda that I have listed as a four-story, it's actually a six-story, but it's a little unique, and the public notices do refer to it as a six-story. And you'll see during the presentation that it's a six-story because it has a mezzanine level, which counts as a story. So that's interior to it. And then the rooftop has a little over what would be permitted on a rooftop amenity level. So that counts as a story as well. But it within this redevelopment plan for this this type of use in the mid-rise, you are permitted six stories. So you'll see that, you know, we are, we are requesting a number of bulk variances tonight, and they're all, you know, pretty much related to the existing condition of the property and and the lot size because we're proposing a seven, seven-unit building with six parking spaces. Out of seven, seven units is defined as a mid-rise apartment building under the the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance. So that the other, the other variances kind of extend off of that, if you will. We are proposing to reuse the existing building. You'll see that during the presentation. And you'll see, I believe you'll see that, you know, the building, we believe, fits in with the character of the area in the immediate area as well as all, all that is going on in this, this area. So this is in the West Side redevelopment, West Side Avenue redevelopment plan area. As this board knows, there's a lot going on over there, and we believe that this is would be a complement to to all of that, those uses and the existing uses. So with that said, I have two witnesses tonight. Dennis DeVino is going to bring it through the architecture and then Carolyn Wurstel will address the the requested variances.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
So DeVino, raise your right hand to be sworn. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State and spell your name for the record, please.
Dennis Michael DeVino, D E N N I S, last name DeVino, D E V I S and Victor I N O.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVino, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay.
Okay. Dennis, before you begin, you're gonna, just for the record, the slide deck that you're, you're going to present is updated with some, some review agent comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have reviewed documentation from both staff, from staff MUA as well as engineering. So we have addressed some of their comments in this new package. So I think the entire package has to be brought in.
Let's, let's mark that as exhibit A only because it's not the same package that's on the portal because it's been updated.
So Mr. Harrington, we're going to mark it as A two for identification. This is a slide presentation. If Mr. DeVino could tell us the number of slides. And then, of course, those will have to be submitted at the conclusion of the year.
Yes, thank you.
Looks like eleven slides?
Okay.
Can you, I don't know if I, can you see the screen yet? I'm not sure.
Not yet.
Yep, excellent.
Not yet.
Oh, not yet. About now.
Yes.
Great. Well, again, thank you for the board for hearing the application this evening. As Mr. Harrington indicated earlier, that the application before the board tonight is for a seven-unit. At the present time, the client is looking to do condo project, which would be great for homeownership. So it's a seven-unit. It's an adaptive reuse. The existing building, as I go through the slides, you'll see existing structure is a pretty much a one-story building right now because it's essentially one level. The building was formally used and last known use for the building is for a, a printing shop. I did, I believe they did a few political brochures and things of that nature at this location. So the building is right here in the center. Let me see if I can blow up the screen a little bit. Present, the, the building is a masonry structure. It's very well constructed. It's a twelve-inch CMU block on the sides, the rear, the front, steel bar joists for the roof and actually a concrete poured roof structure. So it's a, it's a very solid structure. And when we initially looked at it, felt that the best use for this building would be to try to promote this as an adaptive reuse because it's, it's, it's got that potential. It's got the, of course, it's all, it's probably about a ninety-plus percent lot coverage right now. So it's, you know, taking advantage of being able to use that first floor where, you know, we, the, the, the square footage of that first floor level able to provide parking as well as, you know, two exits, a lobby with elevator. Like I said, two, two stairwells and in the back of the first floor is actually one of, one of the residential units. So located, the, the project is located again, one sixty-nine Culver. On this first screen, on this first slide, you see essentially what's in the neighborhood. This is directly across the street at one seventy Culver. That's a six-story structure. A five-story structure in, under construction right now is at the corner of Culver and West Side. This is another five-story structure, about two hundred feet across the street, one ninety Culver, which is directly across the street and two hundred feet west. You can see how this particular building sits in a three-and-a-half-story project, a three-and-a-half-story brick building to the west and a two-and-a-half or three-story building to the east. I think we know about this large six-story complex that's being constructed at the corner of Fisk and Mallory, I believe it is. So there's a lot, lot going on. I, and I'd hopefully when we get done with the presentation, you'll see that this is, in fact, the best use for the site. It does actually fall within the West Side Avenue redevelopment zone. It's right on the edge. So you kind of get the feel that when they establish this West, West Side Development redevelopment zone that, that they kind of thought that something unique would happen to this site. Can you could see it right there. It's like the last lot, last lot in that zone sixty. We're again, seven units. There are, just see if I get over here. There's two, I think there are four two-bedrooms and three one-bedroom units. Our chart here kind of indicates we have fourteen hundred and forty square feet, a good size. Two-bedroom, that's on the first floor. That's that, we have that duplex in the rear of the first floor. And then one bedrooms at seven hundred and fifty square feet, two more two-bedrooms at a thousand fifty-six square feet, another one bedroom at nine twenty, and then another, and another two-bedroom at twelve hundred and twenty-five. So they're, they're, they're generous size units. I think they're best suited for, for a home purchase for ownership. So the zoning chart, I, I think our planner would probably be better reviewing all the requirements of our deviations. It is an undersized lot for what, what for the zone. But again, we feel that this is the best use for the building because of the adaptive reuse quality of it. It is thirty-four point four by a hundred. We, the building does not sit directly at the side, two side yards. There is actually a setback on either side, which is always a positive to be able to access all around the building. Some of the comments, well, let me just move forward. So again, as Chuck had indicated, it is, we identify it as six stories. But if you look at this actual height of the building, it's just under fifty feet. So you can kind of wonder, you know, six stories, fifty feet. And when I get down and I would kind of explain how the elevation, how the building was designed, you can kind of see, even though it qualifies technically as a six-story building, it actually looks like a four-story building when you, when you view it from the street. So we are actually reducing the impervious coverage of the, of the site. While even though we're adding a small section in the back in order to facilitate the needs for, for elevator and exits, we're proposing to put about a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-two square feet of pervious pavers in the rear, which will actually reduce the amount of impervious coverage on the site. We are redo, also reducing presently, the curb cut is sixteen and a half feet. We wanted to keep it a little bit larger than what normal because we have a, you know, when we go through the, the floor plan, you'll see that it's the, the parking parking garage, if you will, or side-by-side cars. So it would, it would be better to, when these cars exit out of that parking area because most, most likely they're going to back out. It would be a lot easier if we had a little bit wider, wider curb cut. Although we are again reducing the curb cut, it, we, we were asking for a fourteen-foot wide curb cut instead of ten. Our second plate here is just a survey. So we move over to the third slide, which is a essentially the site plan. If you will, this omission was as, was part of what the engineering asked us to do along with the existing building had a, about a six, seven, maybe an eight-inch encroachment on the rear yard. We're actually going to take down that wall, pull everything in so we can eliminate that existing encroachment. That again was one of engineering's comments. You could see here, we typically like to do our site plan showing the roof, the roof plan, if you will, but we felt that it was more important so the board can actually understand how these, how the, the parking reacts to the, to the, to the street and to the driveway. So you see here, there were spots for six cars. These two cars in the back are stacked cars. We have a, we have a a motorized piece of equipment that will bring the cars up and down from these four in the back. The two in the front will be surface mounted, so they'll have to share keys. But we do, we're able to get, you know, six spots comfortably in, in the site. The building already exists, the existing setback in the front is already ten feet. So we're obviously going to maintain that. And we are proposing to, we think we can get enough room right here to get a, a street tree. So we're proposing one street tree there. On the other opposite side, we have too many utilities in the way. So the best location would be there. Little privacy fence that will be put into the back, little privacy patio. From that essentially gives you an idea of the first floor. The next two slides are, are typical drawings for, for engineering. The, the next slide, Z one oh one, kind of gives you a before and after shot, existing versus proposed. Starting with the first floor, again, you could see you had a residential unit in the back. You have two ingress and egress of that flank the front parking in the center. And then the lower level, in order to get these two cars to be stackable, we need a small area in the basement so the cars can go down as well as come up. Here's where the mezzanine level falls into play. And again, technically, we are adding that mezzanine level. But when you look at the elevation, you kind of see, well, it doesn't really even look like a, a sec, another floor because this mezzanine level is mainly used for the stacked cars. I mean, there's no elevator stop on this level for the stacked cars, for utilities, areas for building services. And that unit in the back does have their bedrooms on that upper floor. Moving forward with the, the floors, three and four, one bedrooms in the rear with balconies and the units in the front are two bedrooms with bay, with bay units and Juliet balconies. The top floor unit is similar to three and four. However, we incorporated spiral stair, which leads us up to our roof deck. And here's where the sixth story comes into play, and we're looking at over thirty-two and a half foot setback of this story. And then the front yard setback is over forty-two feet. So when you actually, when you view the the building from, from the street level and even the rear of the, of the project, of the property, you can hardly see these bulkheads. So this is where we're proposing some private roof decks and some green roof. Our elevation is, here's where I think it's important for this presentation, as so the board can understand. We will be stripping the old brick off the front, and we've created this this symmetrical design in the front of the building to allow the, have the two flanking doors to be to work well, you know, to work directly with the, with the entire design of that, of that lower level. So, you know, in visually, this looks like one story. It doesn't look like, there, there, technically, it has to be two stories because we're putting another floor in here to, for, for, like I said, for mezzanine to, to, for the cars. But, but, and actually visually, it's looked like one story. And then three more stories above that. Now that's four stories. Now you can hardly even see the bulkhead. So kind of in reality, although this is a high story, it really just looks like a four-story structure. So we are proposing two brick colors. The vertical column components will be the, the lighter brick. And then the inset will be the darker brick. And then these balconies pop out about two feet. And it gives that whole undulation of the, of the facade to give it a lot more definition and not more shadow lines. So it will always read, it, it'll read, each component will read separately. And then when you look at the building, you could actually start to see a lot more definition. The, the sides and the rear of the building, we're just going to stucco. We're going to continue. Well, we have the, the masonry on the lower level. We'll put the wood structure and then we will stucco the sides and the rear. And that is pretty much all we I, I, I could say about the, the design. Again, you could see that there are balconies in the rear. And Juliet balconies in the front. So that, that's concludes my architectural presentation.
All right. Thanks, Mr. DeVino.
Thank you.
Is this smooth finish stucco?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I, I think I'm going to beat Commissioner Torres to it on this one. But the, the parking. You know, we see front-to-back parking here often, and it's, it's, it seems like a struggle to, to a few of us. But the, the stackers just add another layer to that. Yeah. So are the stackers? Or is any of the parking designated per unit, say, i- if you have unit two, you have to park in the stacker?
Well, again, I don't know if that's been worked out. If it ends up being a condo, you know, when you buy a condo, you buy a parking spot with it. So I assume that if, if it does become a homeownership, that the spot will go a spot, some spot will go with, with the purchase of the unit. So first come, first served, probably. Most likely, the people that buy first will get the, get the better spots. Or it may have to do with this, with the size of the unit that who gets the better spot. I, the, the owner, our realtors, and so I think they'll know probably the best way to, to market it. But I, I would have to ask them how they would, how they would think about marketing. But I know in my condo, I am assigned and I own my spot. So I would think if it's a condo, you would own a spot.
Sure. Okay. My concern obviously is, as those cars are being shuffled around, you know, you say there's going to be a shared keys for those cars. So as one tenant is moving somebody else's car, where does that car go? It goes on the sidewalk, right?
It could be pulled out onto the sidewalk, most likely, yeah. It would be pulled out onto the street and then parked on the side where the other car comes out, you know.
So that's, that's a massive problem for me. You know, I think we're going to have a car parked on the sidewalk while somebody's trying to get a stacker space out and that takes time.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if they would park on the sidewalk. I think they would park it. I mean, I was, you know, I, I was there today. I was there. And every time I'm there, there's some sort of spot at the curb line, whether or not it's in front of somebody's driveway while you're struffling around. But there's always, I would, I never have a, a problem finding some sort of spot at the curb, not in a, I wouldn't, I, I, I don't, nobody's going to promote parking on the sidewalk for sure. It should be parked out on the street somewhere while they, you know, while they move the next car out.
Dennis, Dennis, don't, hey, don't, we have a ten-foot front yard setback as well. Right? And then you have some end area within that garage. So you could still be, it can still stay within the, the property while you're jockeying cars, right?
Well, you have ten feet. I think, I don't know, you could probably get it out far enough not to block the sidewalk. You have ten feet and it's a very wide, it's a very wide sidewalk. So I do think that you could probably pull it out and move it over where you won't, you wouldn't actually block someone walking by.
Okay.
Um, you know, you know, I, Mr. Chairman, they have, I, we, we've done, we, we, we both see a lot of applications. You obviously many, much more than, than I do. And some of these areas, they only require, you know, one, one bedrooms and studios are exempt. In this particular zone, they're not. You know, even though I, I had a conversation with the client, they want, you know, because it is a condo, they felt that e- even though this is a little bit unorthodox, they felt that it was necessary to have, you know, have as many parking spots as we could, as we can get in there. I mean, even if we took the approach and the board would accept four spots, you know, the, that wasn't in our program. The client wanted, you know, wanted to figure out a way to get more spots in there. So that, this was our approach to it.
Understood. I, I just go by human nature that someone's going to do what's most convenient for them. And most likely, that'll be a car on the sidewalk.
Hmm. We can, we can have it. We, we didn't do our signage plan, but we could, we could, assign no park, no cars on sidewalks. But yeah, I, I understand your concern.
Yeah. All right. So that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
Can, can, I'm Dr. Desai. And can you explain how these four cars will come out of the garage, whatever it is? If the one in the back wants to get out and one in the front wants to get out?
Yeah, if, if you have one of the cars in the rear, if you're on, if you're at the same level, you would pull out the car and at the car closest to the front. And then you, again, you would have to share keys. I know this is done a lot. I know we did a project many years ago, and Hobo can call it the Hobo can Grand, and that was, there are a lot of stackable spots in there and, and seems to be successful. I haven't heard any concerns, but, and this is only, it's not like you're sharing with a lot of people. There's only two cars that, that, that we're sharing keys with. But if you're pulling out the car in the back, if you're trying, want to pull out the car in the back, you would have to pull out the car in the front first, then pull your car out and then pull, put the other car back in. Then pull your car out and then pull, put the other car back in. Um, I think, uh, to, to the chairman's point, um, and I haven't, again, I haven't discussed this with the client. But maybe it would probably make sense to, when you pull this, pull the car back in, you put the car back in the rear and not back in the front. So when you, so when you return, you don't have to pull a car out again. You just have to put the car back in the front. So I, I mean, that technical aspect hasn't been worked out yet, but I think it probably makes sense.
Mr. Davino, how do you get the top car down?
Uh, there's electronic, um, lift system. Right here. This car goes down into the basement. While this car, you know, while this car gets pulled out. Or if you're taking this car out, the, the, uh, the lift brings this car up into that mezzanine level. So there's two lifts. There's, you only need two lifts because there's only. Four cars that have to be maneuvered in the back. So, um, and it would be all obviously electronically operated. So there's, uh, a lot of safeguards, uh, that, you know, people won't get hurt. So there are companies that make these things.
I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Davino. This is Commissioner Torres.
Hello, Commissioner, how are you?
How are you doing? Yeah, let's start off with the, that you just left off at, the basement level, um. When the car goes down to the basement, that basement is not, use nothing. From the drawing that you showed, just for the cars, right? Well, the drawing I got in my pack.
Yep, there, there it is right there.
Yeah, that's the one.
And there is of course a set of stairs that goes down there for maintenance purposes. Uh, but it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used for anything else other than to store the car when, when the lift goes down.
So people move out of their car and go back up the stairs to go to the, you know, right? They'll go back to the floor that they're going to be on. The level, the vertical level.
That, that's how they have to get their car. Yeah, like this door never, this door is never open. This is a.
Okay.
Door will always stay locked. It's only there in case there's some maintenance of the equipment.
Yeah, I was looking at, at, uh, first time I seen a nice riser diagram on your drawers, but a plumbing. But what do you have for the drainage in that sub-level area? And it doesn't fill up with water?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not in a floodplain. We're actually, we're out of the floodplain. So that lower level will. I mean, we, we didn't show it on this set of drawings, but we, hopefully we get to the construction documents and there'll be drainage. Systems down there. There'll be, there'll be, there'll be an oil interceptor down there in case oil leaks in the car. So we have, you know, this, this is typical when we have these types of things. We put the safeguards in for any kind of oil leaks or.
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, so there'll be a drainage system down at the bottom.
Okay, now the, uh, now that was the, these are my questions. The, you made a comment that, um. With the driveway, the, the curb cut at the size that you saw, the question. Maybe a tree will fit. Yous don't know, not sure.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner, what was that question?
The, when, in your presentation, you said that the size of the curb cut. On the left-hand side where you think you might be able to fit a tree, not sure.
No, it looks, yeah, I mean, we can definitely get a tree on this.
I don't, I don't, I don't want not sure because of a curb cut.
Okay, we can, we can.
Dennis, right?
We can definitely get a tree on the, on the east side of the curb cut, yes.
Okay, let's clear that up.
Yep. Absolutely.
All right, um, now. Seven units to this, uh, uh, building. And so one unit would definitely have no parking.
Correct.
And the front of the area is big enough for them to put a car and other cars to get out. It's what you're saying, if the, moving the car out of the driveway, you could put it to the side. Stops the seventh unit for parking in front of that garage door, uh, to the side. Is there anything there that will prevent that? I see you got plastic boxes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, can you just repeat that? I apologize.
Okay. Let me, let me step back. Okay, I, anybody knows this tender pocket, I, I am. Yeah, if you're not a fan of, I think it's problems, I don't see. In this case here. Are these spaces designated, if you buy a space, and that means. You're going to have a space on that lift?
Yeah, correct.
When I, when I come home at night, I won't be able to park in the rear. I have to park in my space. I need to move that car out of the front of it to get to the, to the space that I am on the lift.
Yes.
Because that's the space I bought.
That is one way to do it. Yes, Commissioner. Another way to do it would be to. Just, if there's a spot in the back open, you park in that spot. And so, so you don't have to pull another car out. It, it may not be done, and that might not be because of the, because this is a stack system. That might not be the best way to do it. I know that's normally how we, you do it when it's ownership, but. Um, the association can make that decision that the cars are may, may be designated to a, a unit. But I mean, a spot could be designated to a unit, but it did not necessarily have to be a specific spot.
Okay.
So, um, and I think.
But once again, we'll have, we'll have cars, in this case, we're going to have cars move in. Um. But I guess, I guess that all cars would be parking on the stackable first.
So counsel. Uh. I'm. There's no requirement. That if these are condominiums, they be deeded to units. So I just, I want to be clear from a legal point of view that obviously. Uh, there are a lot of ways to, to skin the cat. And I don't know that the applicant has made any decision. I appreciate what Mr. Davino is attempting to articulate based on his experience. But I think that there's a multitude of ways in which. The parking can get dealt with, whether it's a rental or a condominium, and I suspect. Uh, from a legal standpoint, you agree with that. That being said, I think the commissioner's question and concern is very valid. And I don't know how it gets addressed in reality in the field. People jockeying cars, borrowing keys, moving and flipping and everything else. That's. That's a legitimate concern, so.
Yeah.
Sure, I, I, I agree as well on that comment.
Uh, just, okay, I, uh, let me add my question in, uh, this, uh, because I, I agree with counsel. And this is something that's not up now for them to know how they're going to do this. Um, but you will, you know, I guess we will be bringing cars out to that sidewalk area at curves. Because I do it every morning at five o'clock in the morning on a straight driveway. No, I've moved two cars just to get one truck out. Um, so it's, it's not that easy. Um, with that, I, I thank you for answering the question. Uh, hope the tree stays where you're going to say is going to stay. Um, but are we sure what size curb cut? Because that seems like we weren't sure what size curb.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner, the curb cut, the existing curb cut was sixteen and a half feet. We're reducing it to fourteen feet.
Fourteen.
And the reason being that, because these are, you know, these are cars are side by side, we felt that it would be easier to maneuver a car. Or a little bit wider curb cut. If the board feels that we, they felt, feel that it wants to be reduced, we can reduce it down. I think ten feet is a little bit, uh, a little bit too small to maneuver a car out when you're, when you're side by side. Uh, we could probably do twelve feet. So we might help add a spot on, you know, might help to add a spot on the street level, uh, against the curb. And now we're going from, you know, we add basically another fourteen and a half feet of curb.
Well, most important thing is your, the, uh, utilities that go on the. Right-hand side and the tree is the most important, on the left-hand side.
Right.
Uh, so if you had to shrink it, then that's why you shrink it, I would imagine. Uh, but okay, I'm, I'm going to end my question now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
If, if I could just to go back to Mr. Lampy's comments, uh, you know, it's understood the board's concerns and. You know, in this instance, uh, whether it's a condo or, or rental, the, the, uh, spaces would definitely be assigned to specific units. I don't think they would be assigned to a specific spot. Uh, because of the mechanical system, that I don't think that, that really lends itself to that because it'd be first in, first out. Um, but, but it would be assigned to specific, uh, to each, you know, the, the respective units would either. It would be part of their rent, uh, and their unit, or part of their condo unit that they would, you know, probably purchase that, that, that unit. Uh, that being said, um, if, you know, hearing the board's, uh, comments. Uh, if you believe it, it's, if the board feels that it would be better off with less parking. Um, maybe without the mechanical system, uh, so that it's one less obstacle, uh, here, maybe there's four spaces. As Mr. Davino said, uh, our clients looking to do this as a condo, so they're, they're thinking is that a condo unit owner. May want a parking spot within the building. Um, but if the board, you know, deems that maybe it's better with just four at-grade spaces, that makes. Uh, you know, uh, the jockeying a little bit more palatable. Um, that is something that, you know, we would, you know, we would, uh. Uh, I know my client will consider.
So counsel, we have a couple of. Issues that I'm appreciating as I'm looking at this. Unfortunately, I did not see this drawing. Before Mr. Davino shared it on our screen. And I'm understanding the testimony. But I got to tell you, the notice I'm looking at is calling this a four-story building. But this is shown as a six-story building.
No, we, uh. It was, uh, the, the, uh, that was the old notice. We re-noticed for, for this hearing. Uh, and we had submitted those notices as a, uh, six-story building. That's, that's why I pointed that out at the beginning that are, uh, the, the secondary notice that we made for this hearing. Uh, a notice for a six-story building.
So counsel, I don't have that notice. I'm looking at the November notice. This is for the November twenty-ninth meeting.
Okay, I can, I can flip that to you right now, um. Because it was done, it was submitted to, to, um. To planning.
I can confirm it was submitted to planning. Um, however, the plans with the changes were not submitted to city planning, um, nor were they on the open data board.
And those, those only, that's why I pointed out earlier on, those only reflect the updated, uh, changes, uh. Incorporating the review agent changes. Uh, and some other, you know, minor tweaks from, from Mr. Davino to identify it as the sixth story.
Yeah, if we could, let's get the, the notice, the updated notice over to Santa, so he can re-review that.
Um, so. The original drawing purported to be a four-story. And we've changed it to reflect a, a six-story. Can you just? Go through that, Mr. Harrington?
The, the building never actually changed. The design never changed. It was a technical, um, kind of glitch because we felt that, that this was only one story. And then, so we, when, when we reviewed it with our planner. She, she clarified the fact that, no, well, because we got a mezzanine in here, because we're putting a car up here, this unfortunately. Uh, qualifies as two stories, even though it was one story before. It's now a two-story. So that took, that, that added a story. And again, uh, the building design never changed. This was just. Trying to clarify what, um, what a story was. Then when we got to the roof, again, this roof, what the roof design never changed. This is the same design. Exactly the same design and the same height that was submitted as a four-story building. But because this, these bulkheads a little, were a little bit larger than what was permitted because we wanted the upper floors to have. Private roof terraces, a roof, uh, roof area. They're a little bit larger and since we're allowed to have six stories in the zone anyway. We just said, okay, well, let's, let's say that's another story. So technically, it's a six-story building, but the building from the very, very start of what we submitted. Never ever changed. It was always exactly this size, this height. It was just inserting the, inserting the proper nomenclature, if you will, of where a story was.
That's, that's why we updated the notices and re-noticed for this hearing, for the sixth story.
But the height at fifty-seven and two inches was always the height. It was just how you broke out the stories?
That's, that's correct.
Exactly right.
Nothing changed from what you're looking at. Uh, it, it, uh, it's the same, the same building.
If you're not seeking a high variance, the heights conform.
That's right.
If you compare with the four-story design, it's exactly the same height. We just added, just put, added stories where we didn't call out a story.
So, Mr. Davino, one of the problems with. The Zoom platform is when you're sharing the screen, my computer slows down tremendously. When I attempt to compare my other drawing to this one.
Do you want me to, uh, well, you want me to get out of the shared screen?
No, because my concern, my concern and my only concern at the moment is the notice. First and foremost, and then the comfort of the board. So with respect to the notice. Mr. Harrington, did you?
I emailed it through now.
Yep, I emailed it to you.
And. So for purposes of the record. I am in receipt of the affidavit and publication proof of mailing with respect. To the notice that was sent. On December first. And I do note that the notice reflects the change we've discussed as far as. It being a six-story building. So let's mark this notice as a three for the record.
Thanks, Santa.
And then Chairman. I will defer to you with respect to, uh, any of. You and the board with respect to any of the other comments.
Mr. Chairman, Chris, can I, can I interject with a comment here? Um, about the previous plans, the plans that are on the open data portal and the ones that are planning received are. Or the latest ones of planning receipts show that the proposed building height for mid-rise residential is four stories, forty-nine feet, six inches. What is shown tonight is not forty-nine feet, six inches. It is now fifty, what was it, fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven.
So, uh, well, I understand it doesn't, you know, come to the level of needing a new variance. I, I, I. I just have an issue here overall about, uh, setting precedent in approving plans. Or proving an application that has plans that are inferior at the moment.
Oh, can I?
Plans that are introduced to planning at the night of the meeting.
So Tim, you haven't seen this updated plan yet?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner, uh, Chairman Liest, and I just, I want to. But Mr. Davino just cleared aside because in his test, in his statement, in his testimony, he said it was forty-nine. Uh, feet, less than fifty feet was the building height.
Yeah.
Building height is fifty-seven. He stated that the house next door. Of five stories and four-story houses. And the new construction ones are a five-story house, not a six-story.
No, uh.
So just to clear up the record, if you count the. If you, unless there's something I don't see on the rooftop of the houses next door, there's only four, four floors. Uh, so, and like Tim said. On your statement, we are under, in your first page, the under fifty feet. But you're actually fifty-seven, two inches.
Commissioner Torres, yes, I, um, I, what I, what I. Commissioner Torres, yes, I um, I, what I, what I testified to is that the buildings on either side were three and three and a half stories. Uh, what I did unfortunately leave out of the table, although I didn't leave it out. Of the actual drawing that I left off the table was that the. Upper floor or where the rooftop bulkhead is was an additional nine feet or nine point two feet. I left it off the table, but it it still was the same height on the on the elevations of the of the building. The elevation's never changed. So if you actually, again, compare what was submitted, so there was, there was a a an error in the table calculation, but the actual. Drawing, the elevator, the the building elevation was always the same. Was always the same height.
Let me, i- if I could interject, uh, cause you know, I've done a few of these obviously before the board. Um, I don't think this is uh, a good use of the board's time, uh, and the applicant's time to go back and forth on this. Uh, I think we need to um, meet with Tim and walk, walk through this and and uh, and explain this because. You know, from our perspective, we we know, you know, we've lived with this. Um, so. You know, we're looking at it differently from than the board and to Tim. So I I think it it'd be better served uh, by uh, the board and the applicant to. Take a step back, we'll we'll sit with Tim and walk through this and then and then if we can come back uh, on January tenth to the board, I think that's that's a better, better path.
I I agree, counsel.
I agree as well.
Yeah, one, one thing I would ask, um. I- if the stackers are still in the plan. I know we don't get this often, but um, i- is there some kind of? Um, I don't know what I'm looking for here, I guess. Not directions, um, but but something that's going to show us the time that it takes the stackers to move. Um, so. You know, that that's one of my biggest concerns here is, is if a car is being pulled out. Um, how long does that car sit outside? Um, granted, I.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm I I'm sure we can speak to the companies that do this and we could get, we will get some information before for the next hearing.
Okay.
If if the stackers stay in, we have, we have that conversation with the client and see what what they want to do. Um, if they stay in and we will give you a lot more um, technical information of of how. Um, how the, how it's going to function.
Yeah.
Mr. Harring, while we're on that topic, can you just tell us, there's a parking variance required? Yes. Saw it. Need eight spaces, you're providing six, is that?
Well, no, we required one per unit, we acquired seven, we're providing six, that's correct. If I could have gotten a seventh one in there, I would have.
Okay, so.
We can't.
Unless there's anything else, um. Are you a date certain, uh, January tenth?
Yes.
And I will make these adjustments to the to the drawings, so we're, everything is consistent. And um, then we'll get that information on the stacks, stackable car units. Is anything else looking? I think we. I think that would satisfy me. Anybody else? Any requests?
Because I think your concerns are a same of mine, so I, you know, that that satisfies me as well.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. And just the public's notice, uh, this will be on our January tenth meeting.
Thank you. Good night, and if we don't talk, have a wonderful holiday.
You too. Enjoy your holidays and a happy new year. Um. Counsel, I don't know if you got an email from Liz or Tanya, uh, we're gonna move your. Uh, item uh, number twenty-six on the agenda up since carried towards out for us tonight.
Okay, then, thank you.
So, let's call item twenty-six is case P two-two dash one-nine-one is a final site plan administrative amendment for one ninety-one to one ninety-five Hudson Street.
Okay, for the record, Charles Harrington, uh, of Collin Foley on behalf of the applicant. Um, we're, we're here tonight, um, I'm sorry, just uh. There you go. Um, we're here uh, for you tonight for administrative amendment. Um, for the project that was approved by this board within the last year for uh, the Erby two slash Erby three uh, development. Uh, the amendments that that we're requesting are, we think you're, you know, relatively minor in nature, it's a, it's a change in the unit mix. Um, of of the the towers, uh, there's a slight change in the the height of the parapet on the ninth floor. Uh, and then the, the uh, mix of the parking spaces has changed a little bit as far as, you know, what's compact and what's full size. But uh, the unit, the unit count has stayed the same, uh, the parking uh, count has stayed the same. So I have one witness uh, tonight, so architects uh, kind of, going to take you through that. You know, Scott Herrick, and I don't know if he has been um. Promoted yet.
Promoting Scott Herrick.
And for the record, we did notice for this as well, even though it's an administrative amendment.
Don't have that notice, counsel.
Jesus Christ.
That's, it's not on the portal.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I have not received it.
Well, I did notice. Um. Well, I don't know if it's necessarily uh, required uh, for the administrative amendment.
Holiday season, lost in the mail.
Lost in the email. Santa, are we correct? We don't uh, technically need notice on this?
We'd like counsel to send it to me.
I will send it to you.
Is Tom Lean on vacation?
No, Tom's here. My, I know my assistant was out for about two weeks. So I know I noticed, I don't know if she sent it in. Oh, for Christ's sake. Do you, you want, you need the notice before we continue, before we continue, or um?
Let's continue, but get it over to me so I can at least uh. Have it, it is an administrative amendment, so. We can proceed without the notice, counsel.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so let's bring Mr. Herrick up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Herrick, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Hi, would you raise your right hand if you sworn please? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
It's Scott, S C O T T, Herrick, H E R R I C K.
Thank you.
And Mr. Herrick, you were the architect of record, correct, for the last project or for the last presentation?
Yes, yes, I was at the last uh, hearing.
Okay, and your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you. Um, let me ask you a question. Do you want me to share the uh, the drawings or just describe the the changes? There there are three minor um, interior, uh, well, not all of them are interior, but there are minor changes. Um, I could.
To be honest, I I think the only thing we might want to see is that parapet change, uh, I think that. You know, the unit mix and the parking mix, I think we can just describe.
Okay, let me describe those and then I'll share my screen um, and show the ninth floor. So the first uh, the first change that we were talking about, uh, Mr. Harrington um, alluded to, and that is a change in the. Unit mix, uh, it's in Tower Three, uh, the total number of units remains exactly the same at uh, at eight hundred and forty-seven. Um, and what we did was, um, based on some structural development of the structural design, uh, we changed. A number of one-bedroom units to studio units, um. The the previously approved count where there were thirty-six studio units. Um, that number is now increased by seventy-nine to a hundred and fifteen studio units and subsequently. What was six hundred and eighty-five one-bedrooms reduced by the same seventy-nine count to six hundred and six. Uh, so again, seventy-nine of these units changed from one-bedroom to studios. Um, there was no impact on the exterior of the building, uh, you know, exterior dimensions or. Um, appearance, uh, you know, the exterior elevations uh, was affected, it's purely an internal change. The second uh, change uh, was subsequently um, based on the change of these. Uh, the units, uh, the parking mix was re-looked at. And again, the total number of parking spaces remains at two hundred and seventy-two. But the mix of compact space, regular space uh, was uh, adjusted and um. Again, that was, you know, ju- the total number of spaces uh, remains the same at uh, two seventy-two. And then if I can, let's see, share my screen, I will show you the, the ninth floor. Can everyone see this screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. So this uh, this sheet, which is um, one of the uh, the twelve sheets in the package, uh, represents the ninth floor. Tower Two, Tower Three, and then the amenity deck, which has a pool and landscaping and is the exterior deck. Um, what was previously approved is this uh. Parapet along the west side and along the north side, if you can see my hand uh, moving on the, on the uh, plan. Um, was approved at ninety-three feet and ten inches and the original um. Height called out on this parapet to the south and to the east. Was uh, indicated as ninety-one feet and two inches. The change that we're uh, making is bringing this parapet. Up to the same height to match this uh, parapet. So this, again, this this parapet, the south and east raises by two foot, eight inches. Um, but now it in fact just matches the the parapet on the other side uh, of the amenity deck.
And Mr. Herrick, what's driving that change?
Um, that was further development of the uh, of the landscape, um. Uh, and and the levels within this, it's it's kind of hard to see here, but uh, if you can, you can tell, but. Uh, we wanted to have the uh, the height and the safety uh, of this um, matchup. To where the pool and the deck are and uh, you know, frankly, I think it was a little bit of an uh, of an oversight um, on our part. Uh, so we just wanted to make these two match, you know, and provide the same, the same containment on both sides.
Okay, understood. Um. Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Herrick. Appreciate it.
You, I will stop sharing.
There you go. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that completes our presentation. I I did just send the uh, a copy of the notices over to Mr. Lampy and Ms. uh, Opper. I know that they were submitted by email uh, on December ninth to uh, planning.
All right, thank you. Santa, do you have a?
I've received Mr. Harrington's email. So Chairman, I can report that I am in receipt of the affidavit and those proof of mailing with respect to the application. It does appear to be in order. Mark it as A-one for purposes of the record. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you. I apologize for the confusion.
No worries, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application. Please raise your hands. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Jersey, no more public, I move to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um. I'm not sure who's this is.
It's me.
Liz.
Yeah.
Anything to add?
No, nothing to add, just that we ask that the um, conditions of the previous approval be upheld.
So that's acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one-nine-one as presented to the board. With all um, existing conditions from the previous um, approval remain.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Okay, um, Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz. Uh, sorry, couldn't hear you. Oh, great.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Gangitin.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, so let's move on to item twelve on the agenda is case P two-two dash one-one-four is a preliminary and final major site plan. Uh, for five eighty-five Route four forty.
Um, Liz, I don't see a Simon Calley in the attendees. Um, oh, I see.
Hand this up.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Simone Calley on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, how are you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, can everybody hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Thank you. Um. On behalf of the applicant Hudson Nissan, we are here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval. Together with one variance, that's a variance from the city's G A R requirement for the property located at five eight-five Route four four zero. Uh, the applicant operates the existing Hudson Nissan Car Dealership and Service Center at the sixteen point seven eight acre site. We are here tonight because the applicant is seeking to cover the existing rooftop deck with. Uh, a canopy to shield its uh, vehicles that it's servicing and its inventory from the elements. We are very mindful of the board's um, agenda tonight and we intend to be as brief as possible. I only have two witnesses, that would be our project architect, Mr. Kevin Spink. Um, I will be calling him first and then second, our planner, Ms. Christine Nizaro-Cafon. I don't know if you could see either of our professionals to promote them to panelist.
They're promoted.
Thank you. I just also wanted to state, we are in receipt of the November twenty-ninth staff report issued by Liz. And should the board act favorably on our application tonight, um, we agree with her proposed conditions of approval. And unless there's any preliminary questions of me, I think um. Santos is gonna review our notice and that would be exhibit one, and then I would like to call my first witness and have him sworn in, please.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening. Chairman, I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. We did carry this from the November twenty-ninth meeting. At which time we preserved that notice so we can mark it as A-one for purposes of the. at which time we preserved that notice, so we can mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn, Mr. Spink? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please spell your name for the record.
Kevin Spink. That's K E V I N S, as in Sam, P as in Peter, I N K.
Thank you.
Mr. Spink, good evening. Uh, I don't believe we've qualified you in the past, have we?
Uh, no, I have not.
Okay, if you could just go, uh, through your professional background and your licensing and if it's current or not tonight.
Certainly. Um, I have a bachelor degree of architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have worked for Kinzani Associates since I graduated in nineteen ninety-four, so I've been there over twenty-eight years. I am the head architect there now. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand nine and in, in good standing.
Spink, please.
Excuse me?
Could you slow down, please?
I'm sorry.
I am the head architect.
I'm the head architect for Kinzani Associate Architects. I do have a license in the state of New Jersey since two thousand nine, and it is in good standing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spink. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin, can you please take the board through the property, um, and the existing conditions?
Um, certainly. I think the easiest way would be to open up, um, to share my screen and to show the floor plans of the building. Give me one second. I'm looking for them. Okay, uh, is it currently being shown on, on screen? Does everybody see it?
Yes, we have it.
Okay, perfect. Uh, this is the existing first floor of the current showroom and service building. Uh, the showroom is at the front of the building facing Route four-forty, which is out in this direction. Um, then you have a service drive that passes through, and then you have a service department at the rear. There is currently a ramp that runs up the side of the building and enters on the second floor into a parking area. This is the parking area currently that we are looking to work with. Uh, currently, there is a second floor at the front of the building here. That is a office area. There is second floor over this whole portion of the building, which is a parts department. And there is second floor over this whole portion of the building that is additional service. So currently, the cars come up and they park within this parking area. There's twenty-five spaces, um, where they are staged for the service. Um, due to current conditions with weather and the deck itself, it is, uh, is much better for us to, uh, put up a rooftop canopy over the top and enclose this portion of the building, uh, to protect the, uh, structure itself. Um, we have color renderings of the elevations that will show what the elevations look like. Uh, if I can change that. I'm going to share. Believe this is it? Yes, okay. This is the front of the building. We have a colored rendering. Um, we have taken our, um,
um, Mr. Speaker.
Elevations.
But could I, could I interrupt you for one second? Uh, we do have to mark these.
Certainly.
Okay, so we'll call them A two. These are the.
This is my elevation that you currently have in my architectural set that we have added color to, so it makes it a little bit easier to see what's going on on the building.
Okay, so is it that entire set, A one through?
No, I have sheets A one and sheets A two rendered, so I'd like to, eh, put them in as exhibits, uh, I guess A two and A three.
Uh, we can just mark them as, uh, A two.
Okay.
Sheets A two and A three colored renderings. And if you could, uh, send those over to planning staff.
Certainly.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is the current elevation, the existing elevation as it is currently. Uh, the front of the building has an ACM, which is a, an aluminum composite metal on the outside. Uh, that further back, it's about a hundred and three feet back from the front of the building. There is the service drive entrance, which is here. Um, that has a, a ribbed panel on it, and I do have color pictures of that, so I can show that to you shortly. Um, but I wanted to just show you what's going on in the building. Behind that portion of this service drive covered canopy is a split-face block. And then much further back, sticking up, and you can see it in a, a flat elevation like this, is a, uh, metal panel. That is a vertical metal panel. Our proposed addition will be to add approximately three feet in height over the existing building. It's, uh, two foot eleven actually in height that would be adding over the existing building, and you would see it right here. That would be the, the addition in between. You can see it better on the side elevations. The side elevation here is the front showroom, and again, that, that second-story office space that's here. Um, it has the ACM panels on it. This portion here is the service drive, and it's a covered canopy that has the rib panels. This whole rest of the building is split-face, and at the back, the second-story, uh, service area has the metal vertical ribbed panel on it. Our addition is going to go right within this area. The enclosure will go right within this area, and again, you can see the stucco portion right here that runs along. And as the ramp comes up, you'll have an overhead door entrance into this, uh, pre-existing parking space that we're covering. The next elevation. Want to make sure I get them all. Should be this one. Hey, this is the rear of the building. Again, this is the colored image of what we have already presented. This is the rear of the building. There is no change. You cannot see the addition from the rear of the building because it is, it is blocked by the second-floor, uh, service department area. Uh, from the, uh, existing south elevation, the elevation facing south, uh, again, this is the, the, the enclosed or second-story service department. This is the parking area here with the first, the two-story office space at the front. We are looking to enclose this portion here. Um, so you'd see it here with the stucco portion. The existing fire stair and exit that is here will remain. We'll just put a door at that to access the fire stair down. The last thing I would like to show is existing. Okay. These are some, this is the actual photo of the front of the building where the service drive entrance is. You can see the ribbed panel here and the ACM panel at the front, which is just a silver, uh, metal panel. The rib panel here, I did a close-up of it, so you can see the existing horizontal, um, metal siding that is here. The rest of the building is made up of the existing split-face material. This is a photo of the split-face or the vertical metal siding that is on the second-floor service department. Our new addition is going to be made with this ephesus, which would have a stippled pattern to it, um, so that it would match the split-face, and we will match it in color. We'll, we'll have it painted the same, uh, whitish off-bray color that is currently on the building. And that pretty much concludes it. I do have photos of the existing building from further back, but I do not know if you need to see those or not.
Um, I don't think so. I mean, we have the drawings there. Um, so the one, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement. Um, if we're, we're using ephesus on the building, we're adding to the ephesus or no?
Uh, we're, we're just putting the ephesus into this new, um, enclosure that we're putting on. That is it.
Okay, so one condition we usually put on any structure using ephesus is that material is cut indoors, so, um, you know, none of the, uh, none of the shavings of the, the foam or anything, um, blow into the neighborhood.
That would be acceptable, I would think, with the owners, because, uh, they don't want those little foam particles all over their cars.
I would hope not. I would hope not. Um, and, uh, Liz, I think you could probably word that better than me in, uh, in the resolution.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Um, that's it for me. I have no other questions. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spink. We appreciate it. And if you could, please stop that screen share. You got it. You beat me to it. Okay, go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness, Christine Caphone. There you are.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Hi, yeah, hear me okay?
Would you raise your?
We can, yes.
Be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could spell your full name for the record?
Certainly. It's Christine Nizaro, N A Z Z A R O, Caphone, C O F as in Frank, O N E. This is, address is one-twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two-hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero-seven-seven-zero-one. I am testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I've been testifying as such for twenty-seven years in the state of New Jersey, but I've been qualified by well over four-hundred-and-fifty planning and zoning boards. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, and my licenses are current and valid.
Okay, tha- thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Christine, why don't you take it away with your planning proofs?
Sure. Uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. As was indicated by our architect and Ms. Cali, this is a relatively straightforward application. The only variance relief that's being sought in conjunction with this application is actually an existing condition on the property today. We need to seek relief for the green area ratio of point zero-six, where the ordinance requires point-two-five percent. That is an existing condition that will not, not be either hindered, exacerbated, or improved by this application. Under the land use law, the board can grant bulk variances under two scenarios. Under the C one, a hardship, or in the absence of any hardship, you can grant under the C two if you find that one or more purposes of the land use law would be advanced by the grant of the application. Here in this instance, because all of the improvements are existing, generating G A R of point zero-six, I think the board can look at that as a C one. One of the criteria for C one, in addition to the conditions such as topography or shape of a piece of property is lawful pre-existing structures, which this certainly is. So I believe that the C one is appropriate. In the absence of the C one, though, you can also grant the variance under the C two statutory criteria if you find that one or more purposes of the land use law would be advanced. There are multiple purposes of the land use law.
Could you slow down, please? Pick up from, uh, if you find that one or more purposes of the land use.
Law are advanced, uh, the board can certainly grant the variance under the C two or flexible C statute. So here, I believe the board could look at criteria A, and these criteria are not unique to Jersey City. I didn't make them up. They come right out of the land use law at forty-colon fifty-five D dash-two. Statutorily, we have an obligation to advance one or more. I believe we advance criteria A, which talks about promoting the general welfare. This will be a better scenario for the employees as well as protecting the applicant's, um, inventory. So that certainly promotes the general welfare. Criteria G talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of use. That is also advanced the structure as indicated by your planner's review dated eleven-twenty-nine-twenty-two, that in comparison, and I'm reading from her, their, their report, the staff comments, that in comparison to the scale of the site, the proposed scope of work is very limited, and the applicant is not seeking to increase the impermeable area. So certainly, criteria G is advanced as there's sufficient space. And also criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land. The applicant is certainly proposing an efficient use of space that already exists where they're parking vehicles just to do so, um, in a bit more of an efficient manner, and that it's protected from the elements. And then, of course, uh, looking at the negative criteria, the negative criteria does not ask you to hold this other or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. And here, the, um, the fact that the applicant is able to enclose the structure, make it a little, a little bit more usable, and in such a matter that they are not, uh, taking up any on-street parking to improve their parking efficiencies. I think the board can certainly look at the fact, and the fact that they're not adding any additional impervious coverage. I think the board can certainly be comfortable that the negative criteria is in fact satisfied, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good if in fact the board moves favorably on these app, uh, on this variance. So with that said, I believe the applicant meets their statutory burden of proof, and I have nothing further on direct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Navarro Caphone. Um, I have no questions and hints. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, is that your presentation?
That is, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we've satisfied the proofs required for the variance relief saw, and we respectfully request that this board act favorably on our application. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands, and if you were calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from the public?
Chair, see no more public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Liz, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, yeah, I will just add that, um, this application actually just met the threshold for a major site plan, so it was just about a thousand square feet over the threshold. So it was kind of this, um, understanding of, of the scope of the application, but with that, it's, it's very close to the threshold for minor. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Um, uh, Simone, you stated that you, uh, reviewed the staff report and would agree to the conditions. Um, we will add the condition regarding ephesus and, um, proper handling of it, uh, for installation on site.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one-one-four as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation and condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay. Um, to, to, uh, Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I definitely agree with, um, the applicant's planner. Uh, I don't think there's any detriment to the master plan, and, uh, I'm gonna vote aye.
Great. Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
Merry holidays.
Uh, Bridget, do you want to take a, uh, ten-minute break?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, let's take ten, everybody. It's seven-oh-one. We'll come back at seven-eleven. Okay, could we come to order again, everybody, please? All right, we are going to bring up Tom Lean real quick. He has a request for item sixteen on the agenda.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. Unfortunately, my architect is unavailable. Apparently, he is out of the country, and I didn't learn that until this morning. So I'm just going to ask that this be carried to January tenth with preservation of notice. I would also ask that this be placed fairly high on the agenda. It's an extremely simple application to a family home in the Morris Canal with no deviations. It's already been vetted by historic in the communities. It'll fly.
Okay, so we're talking about three twenty-four Witten Street, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're going to carry item sixteen as case P two two dash one five seven is a minor site plan and C variance for three twenty-four Witten Street to a date certain, January tenth.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Chairman, I actually received correspondence from Mr. Fazillo and Gerard's requested to carry his Cottage Street application. That is.
Twenty three.
That is, yes, twenty-three. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to carry item twenty-three is case P two two dash one nine zero is an administrative amendment for eleven to twenty-nine Cottage Street to a date certain, January tenth. Looking like that's going to be the meeting to go to. That's going to be a busy night. Okay, so let's get back to item thirteen. We're currently on as case P two one dash one four nine is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances for three fifty-nine to three sixty-one Johnston Ave.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Joseph Castano Quigley Chirami for the applicants. This is a notice application. I would ask that we confirm notices are received.
Thank you, Counsel. I received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at three fifty-nine dash three sixty-one Johnston Street here in the city. Had the opportunity to review those. This matter was scheduled to be heard on the November twenty-ninth hearing, at which time we carried the notice through for two nights here. Chairman, all does appear to be in order. We can mark it as a one for now.
Great. Thank you, Counsel.
Wonderful. Thank you. So three fifty-nine, three sixty-one Johnston Avenue. This is located on the corner of Johnston and Pacific Avenue in the Lafayette Park redevelopment plan. But the applicant's proposing is a six-story mixed-use building with commercial on the ground floor and twenty dwelling units above the ground floor. There is an alley at the rear of the property. It's a condition that's somewhat common in Jersey City, but by no means the predominant throughout. That's where the parking is being proposed. We're proposing four parking spaces with access from the alleyway. The board should know that there's an affordable housing bonus, which applies here. Fifteen percent of all bedrooms, not of all units, but fifteen percent of all bedrooms are required to be affordable. What that works out to is one-two bedroom and two studios. A checklist was submitted to the Affordable Housing Administration prior to completeness of this application. In order to accomplish all of this, we need preliminary and final major site plan approval with the C variance for the rear yard setback. The the rear yard setback variance is an encroachment into the rear yard by the bay windows above the ground floor. It'll make a lot more sense when we take a look at the plans. We do have two experts this evening. We have Will and Arthur is our engineer. Unless the board really wants to hear from the engineer, we don't have to go through that testimony. It's a long agenda. So Will, let's get you some more in.
I see.
Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, it's William Weckenman. Last name is spelled double. W E C K E N M A N N.
Okay, you just dropped out just a moment, yeah.
Yeah, we lost you there for a second. Bridget, do you need?
No, I I I see his name in the box, but I'd like to get it on the record, but it is now. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, just go try to go slow, Will. You're going in and out a little bit.
Sure.
And Mr. Weckenman, just for the record.
W E C K, yes.
We've qualified you when the past your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Yes, on both. Sorry, so the last name is W E C K E N M A N N. Let me share my screen here. I'll pull up the. It's coming through, okay?
Yes, we have. Yep, now it is.
Okay, says I have a stable connection, so I apologize if I if I cut out here. As Stephen, the project is a six-story building at the corner of Johnston and Pacific. This is a a major intersection in this neighborhood. And you know, this is the, I think what we're proposing is is a big improvement to a relatively quiet and nondescript corner. I'll just like to start out by sharing some existing photos of the property. It's currently a two-family house, which is set back from the street. Steve, I'd also like to enter sheet one A one one oh eight as an exhibit.
Sure, so I think this is, I think this would be eight two.
Yeah, that's correct, eight two.
Okay, thank you.
Well, these are just some additional photos, right, of of the property in the alleyway?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. I I thought the previous photos were a little bit too small, so I think this gives a better idea of what that corner looks like from Pacific, Pacific Avenue, as well as the rear alley, which is accessed off of Johnston Avenue. Moving back to the site plan, I will just walk through the 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 building configuration quickly. Pacific Avenue is towards the bottom of the screen, and Johnston Avenue is towards the right. One of the unique features of this of this property and of this redevelopment zone is that the front yard setback is the predominant setback on the block front. So what that means for the site is that the building is set back approximately three and a half feet from the front property line to align with the adjoining neighbor. Typically, we would, for buildings like this, we would try and push it as far forward as we can to the front property line. And and that's the reason why we're asking for the rear yard setback variances, because we are conforming with the front yard setback for the block. We we required a little, some extra square footage to make the units a little bit more functional on the upper floors, which which I'll showcase later in the presentation. So we have a a large, a very wide sidewalk on on Pacific, which I think is kind of nice. As it allows a little bit more room between the street and the commercial space that we're proposing on the ground floor. Moving backwards towards the building, sorry, towards the the rear parking lot. We have a six-story building here with a occupied roof deck on a six-floor roof towards the front of the building. You have some utility space towards the center of the building, and then a large extensive green roof towards the rear section of the six-floor roof. You could see here, we've indicated the bay windows that we're proposing on floors two through six. So the the setback variance we're requesting is only for floors two through six. The first floor actually conforms with twenty-five-foot rear yard setback for the for the redevelopment zone. We're proposing to completely redo the alleyway on the property. So this entire section will be repaved with pervious asphalt. And we're proposing four parking spaces off of this alley. We're also proposing improvements to the curb cut and the existing entrance to the to the alleyway, which is which is located here off of Johnston Avenue. Moving on, we have our existing site plan here, which admittedly a little bit hard to read, but you can get a sense of how the structure sits on the site. It's actually set back thirteen feet from the from the front property line, so it's it's it sort of sits in the middle of the property. There's also two parking spaces, two existing parking spaces. So we will be upping the parking count for the, we'll be adding two two additional spaces to the property. Moving on to the floor plans for the we have a nice-sized commercial space which fronts onto Pacific. It's at the corner. So it's a sort of a prime location for a for a nice commercial retail establishment. We have the 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 building entrance, which is sort of, it's positioned midway on the building off of Johnston Avenue. And then we have a lounge and amenity space towards the rear of the first floor with the utilities and the service areas being located against the the south wall. On the upper floors, each floor is identical. We're we're proposing four four units per floor. We have two one-bedroom units towards the front of the building. Each of these units has a small office space, built-in office area in into the unit. So it's, which is a nice feature of these apartments. And then towards the back of the building, we have a two-bedroom unit and a studio apartment. And as you can see here, these are the bay windows that we're proposing. We're also proposing that these be heavily glazed, so with a lot of visibility out towards the back of the building. Also to reduce the reduce the the visual impact of the of these bays that project out from the main facade. And we'll see that a little bit more clearly on the elevations. Finally, we have the roof plan here. As I mentioned, we have a an occupied deck towards the front of the roof. We have a small, a small vestibule towards the center. We have the two stair cores and utility areas towards the center and a green roof towards the back. The the HVAC condensing units won't be visible from the street. We're proposing a a parapet that is slightly higher than the equipment. So everything will be screened from you, from view, from the from the from the street. Moving on to the elevations of the building. Posing a tan face brick is the primary material, and and we're using it's a very simple, clean, modern design. We have this a lot, a large expansive glass storefront at the base of the building, as well as large windows in each of the units. We have this a lot, a large expansive glass storefront at the base of the building as well as large, uh, windows in each of the units. The front-facing units will have Juliet balconies. We have a. A railing detail from these balconies which which extends up to the roof parapet as well. Moving on. The rear elevation, as I mentioned. We, uh, we're using brick as the primary facade material, but we are introducing a lot of glass. For the. A windows again to 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 lighten their appearance and and. Reduce the bulk of the extension into the into the rear yard. We also are proposing a large amount of glass at the base of the building. And we we feel very strongly that it's important to bring activity and visibility to to the alleyway, so we want the building to. Read just as strongly from the front and the rear because again, not only will this be visible from on all three sides because it's on the corner. But we felt strongly about making connection with the back alleyway, so it it wasn't, it doesn't feel like an afterthought. To the project. Also have a secondary entrance to the to the building from the rear as well. This is the Johnston Avenue elevation. Again, we're carrying the the same brick and and large window openings around the side of the building. We're also introducing a fiber cement material at the base, which is also carried up to the building bulkheads. Which frames and highlights the building entrance. Again, we're using a lot of glass. Very simple detailing. This, uh, uh, we have a posed rendering of the building here, um, along with our our selected, uh, our material samples. Oh, the one elevation, I. Sorry, I skipped over the side elevation. So the the side elevation of the building is is on the property line. But we're proposing a a large. We're proposing stucco for this for the side elevation. It's it's fairly simple. Again, we are right on the property line. Fortunately, it it is, it is very visible. It will be visible from this. The avenue, so, um, I think we're we're open to possibly doing some sort of a mural or decorative treatment to this this facade to break up the the monotony of it.
And and Will, that's a a smooth finish.
Smooth, smooth finish, yes. Again, this, these are the materials that that I highlighted previously. And then Steve, again, I'd like to enter this. This image is another exhibit.
Eight, eight-three, and this is just, um. An enlarged rendering of the, uh, of the commercial, uh, the ground floor facade.
Yes, correct. So we I I just wanted to include this to to include, to showcase a little bit more detail of. The building, uh, will look from the street.
One moment. This is the residential entrance, correct?
Residential entrance, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The residential entrance, okay.
Moving on, we have our, uh, our shadow study for the project, which is fairly standard. They won't spend much time on this unless there are any questions. Same with the with the dual impact assessment. Again, the building is is in in keeping with the height of, uh, we're we're not asking for any height variances with the project, so. The scale of the building is in keeping with the the surrounding neighborhoods. And, uh, the the impact on the view corridors is is fairly minimal. So with that, that concludes my portion. My presentation.
Great, thanks, Will. Um, I I do, I do have to make another correction. Uh, as well, I misspoke earlier when I was talking about the affordable unit accounts. It's, I believe it's two two-bedroom units, not one-two-bedroom and two. Studios, um, I I I took a look at the latest Affordable Housing Checklist. We have on there, we agreed to with Affordable Housing Administration, was two two-bedroom units. Total of four bedrooms is what's required. For for the building and that there would be two units, two bedrooms each again, so I I misspoke earlier during my my introduction.
Okay, understood, counsel. Thank you. Um, yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Wackenman. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, yes.
So if you could just up your screen share.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We we do have Arthur, our engineer. It it's a very long agenda, um, you know, ha- happy to go through engineering testimonies if the board wants to hear from him.
I don't know that it's necessary. Does anybody want to hear engineering comments?
Well, I don't have a question for the engineer, and I don't, I was just trying to get my parents here, though. Maybe the architect could answer the question. The, he shows the two-family house where this property is going to be at. Is that next to on Pacific Avenue, the house that's been elevated to? Are they demoing those houses? Is there demolition, uh, knocking out of any homes?
It's just, it it is, we are proposing it.
I see in your pictures you have.
Second, you're talking over one another, please. Go ahead, Kutoris.
I see in the pictures you show on Pacific Avenue, a house on a quarter. And and right next to it, there is a elevated home. They maced it up, one of the same houses. I'm just wondering, is that going to be demoed or taken down? Is that the same property? I'm 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 a little. Disoriented on that one.
No.
It's not your property.
Sure. No, no, it's just the one on the corner, just this one structure.
It's just a picture that you're showing.
Yeah.
Okay, then. All right, I was just confused on which way we were going with, these are going there, and I, uh. I was about to, okay, hopefully somebody would do something with that property one day. I don't know. That I saw.
The, yes, Commissioner Torres, I think you're talking about a property that's, um, on the opposite.
It's on the opposite side, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, this property is not adjacent to that property and and nor do I know of an application that includes it at this time.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Okay, counsel, anything else?
Nothing except that we we did receive the staff memo or we received some engineering comments. All the conditions in staff memo are acceptable and we'll work with engineering on addressing the the engineering comments.
Okay.
But that concludes our testimony.
And, uh, if you could just make sure that those two exhibits get over to city planning.
Absolutely. Will's going to email them to me now.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. I see a couple of hands raised already. If you're here from the public and you want to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Hello, this is Damian. Can you guys see me?
We can, yes.
Okay, hey, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sorry. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your full name?
First name is Damian, D A M I A N, last name is Viatrada, W I E C Z O R E K.
Damian, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Good evening. I'm actually have, I'm actually a resident who lives down the driveway and, um, I'm actually on this phone call just to advise to vote against it. I wanted to make a couple of points, but, uh, uh, the driveway item is, um, is, that's the one thing that we're having a problem with. Because the driveway is actually for ten homes. In this area, so it looks like, uh, it it's going to be a major problem because, uh. It it. That that building does not belong here. It's all two-family homes, families that have bought these homes in the early nineties that were part of a low-income program. It's mostly owner-occupied. If this building is passed, it's going to be the beginning of the end for a lot of these families. The construction of this building is going to have a major, major impact. All all of our mailboxes are at the end of the driveway. No one really knew about this. This building going up. Um, I actually didn't know because my wife found the notice under our car. And actually, we never got it. Um, so when we spoke to neighbors, a lot of them don't even know this is happening. Um, and it's going to affect about twenty families. If the driver is redone. The current owner, um, has neglected the, um. Actually, uh, let's go, he's been summoned for unkept property, uh, broken sidewalk. He's on the property for a year. Hasn't done anything about it to fix it. He's just a bad neighbor. To us, it's going to have a very, very negative on everyone that lives on this block. Actually, I'm sorry, half of the properties because it's ten homes per driveway. So if the driver is being repaved, I just want the, uh, you guys should take into consideration about the nine other. I'm sorry, eighteen other families that live and take advantage of this driveway day to day. Like I said, the current owner has been. He received summonses for the property. He's a bad neighbor, out-of-state developer, spent too much money on this property. I understand he's trying to recoup it. But the driver situation wasn't explained, who's going to be using driveway, whether it's the rental or is the commercial space. If it's the commercial space. Just keep in mind, you cannot make a U-turn in this driveway. It's so small. If you pull in and there's no parking. You have to go on someone else's private property and make a U-turn, which happens very, very often. We had cars dumped on our property. Or and people just pulling in whenever there's a festival in Liberty State Park, people just take advantage. Park it and becomes a huge hassle for the current occupants. Had JCPD come, they don't want to touch it because it's private property, so we rely on good neighbors. This is not a good neighbor. It's just going to make all of our lives miserable. And that's pretty much it. If anyone could, you know, provide some additional insight on the parking, who's going to be used it, that would be great. But yeah, that that is biggest concern, uh, that this building does not belong in this neighborhood. Just because you can't build it, doesn't mean it's right.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselors, do you want to address anything?
There we go. Yeah, absolutely. Um, I I understand I don't necessarily disagree with some of those concerns. I I would say that. This redevelopment plan is specifically designed for exact exactly this type of development. It it is very different from what's there now, and I I think that's, I think that's the point. My client only recently acquired the property, um, so I don't know if the public speaker was referring to the prior owner. There was some several outstanding liens on the property. One of them was to the JCRA related to the original affordable development there and related to the parking. It's actually required that the parking be in that alley. That that's what the redevelopment plan calls for, is for parking to be back there. And for the property to be developed exactly in this manner. So I I understand it's a big change. Um, there's no disagreement with that, but that's. That that's why this redevelopment plan's in place.
All right, thank you. All right, once again, anybody that wants to comment from the public, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Alexandra's been promoted.
All right, thanks, Ken.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Nagy.
Good evening. Let's just get you some more in.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you can state and spell your full name.
Alexandra Nagy, A L E X A N D R A. N A G Y.
Thank you.
Ms. Nagy, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
So can they elaborate on how the shared driveway will be used? Um, or is it going to be blocked at all? Will all the residents continue to be able to have access to our private driveway? Or once the building is built, will they block? And not let us in at all?
Chairman, let's get all the questions out before we respond.
Yeah, Ms. Nagy, if we could, do you have other questions and we'll get them all answered for you?
Uh, that was my main concern because, uh, you know, I've been living here for ten years. And the biggest issue has always been the driveway, uh, with parking, especially when there's a lot of events going on in the area. You know, we've had people just dump their cars and it just. I don't know, like this whole thing is, hasn't been really fully explained in regards to the driveway. Because it is accessible to all the owners and residents on that block. As as well as the post office, when they come in, they need access to the, uh, our driveway in order to get to the mailbox, which is located in the middle of the property. So that's what my concern is. Um, so if they can elaborate about the shared driveway. And my understanding also is that when they submitted the paperwork. It was noted that there was no easement, I believe. And I believe there is an easement or. I forget, but if you can look into that also, because. Um, I believe there there was something, uh. Like, when I looked through it, I was like, this isn't right about the easement.
Okay, uh, yeah, we'll get those answered for you. Counsel, do you want to address that?
Yeah, sure. So, um, the access to the driveway won't be blocked. The the parking is provided within the required rear yard setback, so the cars are tucked in. We we could certainly bring up the site plan again to, uh. To take a look at that again to show show that clearance, but the the driveway is not going to be blocked by by cars.
Yes, Steve, I I just also add that. Not not only will the drive, the driveway is going, the the driveway will continue to operate as it currently operates. Both when the building is is constructed as well as as during construction. The the parking spaces that we're proposing also. Do not extend into the driveway, so we are maintaining the twenty-two-foot, uh, drive aisle clearance that is required for a parking lot. So, um. Aside from, uh. Potential disruption as this is repaved during construction. There will be no change to the operation of of the driveway as it currently exists. And furthermore. One of the, one of the other requirements, uh, from the building department is that we provide a a protection plan. For the neighboring buildings and adjacent, uh, property areas, uh, as as part of the building permit process, so. During construction, the 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 alleyway will remain accessible and, um, the the neighboring, uh, yards and parking spaces. Will also be protected as well from any, uh, potential, uh, uh, damage or, um. You know, debris that that results from the construction.
All right, I thank you. Appreciate it. Um, counsel, there's no easement, correct?
I I think what the speaker was referring to is a a a comment from engineering. That was talking about an easement. I I actually have to, I have to check with Mr. Trabi in my office because I know he's dealt with, um, these alleyways in the past. I I honestly. I am not sure exactly what the mechanism is here for the alleyway, but I believe there is a mechanism in place. With 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 the city because the these, like I was saying, these alleys are fairly common and the redevelopment plan. Calls for the parking and the access to be provided in the alley.
Chair, chair, if I if I may, um, it's Matt. Uh, these, these. The easements on these properties were part of the subdivision for by JP Affordable, who built these homes in the early nineties. They are on the subdivision plats. Um, they are fee simple. Properties, there's, they're not condominium properties that all have access to these alleys on different blocks in the Lafayette Park redevelopment area.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Chair, see no more public. I would like to close the public portion.
We do have one more.
Promoted Deborah French.
Promoted Deborah French.
Good evening, Ms. French.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. French, could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and spill your name for the record, please?
Deborah, D E B O R A H, last name French, F R E N C H.
Thank you.
Ms. French, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, yes, I just have a question in reference to, um. The rooms, you said it was a two, two bedrooms and two studios. Are there any three bedrooms coming up, uh, in this plan?
Um, council, I'll let you handle that.
Sure, so there there's no three bedrooms, we're proposing a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms.
One bedroom, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. French, we appreciate it. All right, anybody else from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hands, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
There's seen no more public, I wish to close the public portion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, motion and a second, public is closed, uh, Matt, do you wanna uh add anything?
Uh, so just following up on some of the comments made, I think one of the other questions that was outstanding. Um, was the parking spaces, those are to be used for the apartments or for the commercial space, uh, council.
Uh, the plan is to use, um. Plans to use them for for the apartments, uh, potentially, one of them would be for the commercial space, but that hasn't been a hundred percent determined yet.
Okay.
The.
I'm not sure we meet the correct, the threshold for or or parking for the commercial space, but we. So I I I I'm not sure, I don't think it's required.
Would all be, then they would all be for the for the residential then, that's right, we did talk about.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that, um, that. The applicant put on the record, uh, or the attorney put on the record that they are gonna be complying with staff conditions in the Jersey City Engineering Memo. And the city planning memo, uh, the city planning memo is dated December eighth, twenty twenty-two. Um, there. I, uh, recognize that there is actually, there's an error in my, or typo in my my memo. Four bedrooms are supposed to be affordable, um, and I'm not sure if it was clear if it was units or bedrooms in my memo. But to clarify, it's four bedrooms in this project that are supposed to be affordable, which results in two units. Um, this application includes a rear yard setback. Where they are required to have a twenty-five foot rear yard uh setback. As uh testified, they're proposing a twenty-one point five-six. Um, rear yard setback on the upper stories, uh, which is, uh, encroached upon by the bay windows. Uh, this application is in a flood zone, um, which, uh, they are. Uh, which is required to meet the GR, G A R requirements, uh, this project is meeting those. The applicant has, uh, testified thoroughly to the the. Attributes of their project and the scope of their project, uh. I've I've heard some comments about, uh, concern about the the shared driveway. Uh, it appears as though they are going to be reconstructing, um, the driveway, as well as the curb cut. Um, uh, on my, uh, some of my field visits to this area and the surrounding blocks. Some of these, these shared driveways are are in, uh, different states of repair, uh, so it should be a welcome improvement. Um, then also, some of them have some drainage issues, I'm not sure if there's been an assessment by the applicant as to whether or not drainage will be improved. Uh, but it disappear on their, uh, site plan that there is a parking lot drainage on their portion of of, uh. This shared parking, uh. Area. Um, I believe that it would be in, uh, a good practice for the applicant to reach out to some of these neighbors, um, to. Obviously, bring them up to speed on when, uh, this area might be closed or that work might be done. Um, uh, in the future, if this project is approved, as well as perhaps there is a way for this applicant to consider. Uh, some of these, um. Uh. Users that are not living in the area or live outside the area or not living on that block in particular. Um, maybe there is a way to to bring a a level of security to that area, either with a gate. Um, that can be shared amongst the block. Um, nothing that I I think they we can make part of this application, but perhaps that is something that they can come back with in the future. Uh, so with that, um, and looking at their variance, there is no substantial detriment. Um, to the zone plan by this variance, uh, that they are proposing. Uh, they are meeting the standards of the the redevelopment plan and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt, we appreciate it. All right, so on, obtain a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash one four nine as presented to the board to get it with staff recommendation and conditions.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
On a motion approved with conditions, acting chairman Gangadin.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Torres.
It seems to be a larger building in front of these buildings and that are driveway that they share. Uh, they even share it to walk back there to go into houses, uh, it's gonna be a challenge on the construction. Um, it was just sort of what the staff recommends that you do work with them even before you guys started with this project. Um, oh, they reached out to us with their concerns, uh, which, uh, you keep that dialogue going. And, um. It's gonna start to match, effectively, the people in that neighborhood, all, you know. The other builders that are coming around in the area, so maybe the, find a way to get a blend of the two types of buildings. And, uh, you know, in in that neighborhood, you know, uh, a little mixture. Uh, which is always good, always good, after store funds, the commercial part, uh, in the neighborhood, so. Uh, with that, I'm gonna prove it, I vote for this project, but I do wish. Works with this company, cuz if you look at the shadow drawing, it looks like. Front of a bunch of little buildings, and, uh, it's kinda, must be scary for those that live there. Uh, but if you work with them through the driveway, I think they would be happy to have you as a staple.
Also, Ken, I voted I vote, thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I do wanna echo what Commissioner Torres's concerns for the neighborhood, um. Yeah, any, any outreach the the applicant can do to the neighborhood and. You know, kind to, kind to dissuade those, uh, fears about that driveway. Um, the building is in line with the redevelopment plan, I don't think there's any detriment to the plan for the, uh. Variance, uh, I think it complies with the master plan and I'm gonna vote I.
Motion carries on favor and a motion approved with conditions, and I wanna correct myself, acting chairwoman, uh, Gangadin, thank you very much.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
That was the correct.
Again, thank you.
Welcome to it. All right, uh, so let's move on to item fourteen, uh, is case P two two dash two zero three is a review and discussion of amendments. To the land development ordinance regarding cannabis establishment and distributor regulations related to micro businesses. Uh, this has been sponsored by the Division of City Planning Staff and formal action may be taken.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for that, uh, chairman, um, this is a predicated by, um. A couple zoning determination letters, uh, that have resulted in interpretation from the division of zoning. Um, which significantly reduced what city planning understood to be the intent of the. Uh, cannabis establishment and distributor portion of the cannabis ordinance. Um, so there were two distinctions, if I can remind the board, there's a, there's a micro business. And then there's everything else that's maybe, that's not a micro business. Micro business is, uh, can be largely, um, narrowed down to a business that can be no larger than two thousand five hundred square feet. Um, there are other caveats as well, and they're kind of more in the aligned with, uh, sort of bulk or intensity limits. Uh, so they can only sell a certain amount of product or or cultivate a certain amount of product product per month. Um, whereas if you're not a micro business, there's, there's really no limit other than. Perhaps how much you can, uh, sell to an individual person that comes in through the door. Um, so when considering, um, the class one, two, three and four licenses. Uh, the way that it was interpreted was that it was actually micro business. Micro businesses that were under a class one, two, three or four license. Were allowed in less places than if you were not a micro business and one of those classes. So that was not the intent of the original ordinance, and what we're, we have here is language to, um, that was approved by. The division of zoning that meets the intent that city planning initially, um, wished to to, uh. To to enact, and, uh, so the sentence here reads. Cannabis establishments and distributors subject to class one, two, three, four licenses and certified. As a micro business shall be permitted as conditional uses as regulated herein, you know, industrial zones. Light industrial zones or industrial overlays. Commercial slash automotive zone, highway commercial zones, as well as any structure in all's, all zone districts and redevelopment plans. Which industrial, light industrial warehouse, auto repair garage or auto body shop is deemed as a pre-existing use. That's the new language, uh, then you have the strike to languages, which how it was, how, uh, it read before. Um, so this language clarifies the intent, um, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt, um, any questions, anybody?
No.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, um, all right, thank you, Matt, if you could stop that screen share real quick. All right, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this, uh, proposed change to the LDO? Anybody from public, uh, please raise your hand, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands, we have one.
Promoting Rafael Corona. Hello.
We got you, is there any way you can turn your video on, sir?
Yeah, I'm starting right now. Okay, perfect, how you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, uh, just have a question for you guys.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Sure.
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name?
Uh, my name is Rafael Corona, R A F A E L, last name Corona, C O R O N A.
Thank you.
Mister Corona, we have three minutes for you, sir.
Okay, I have two questions, uh. If the locations are already zoned on the map. Per se, I know the classes one through five and you guys kinda opening up the map for those that are not micro businesses. But if they're already zoned on the map and planning, do you guys put a dot to let the other people know that that place is already zoned for? For planning and. Why are buffers being put into place if nobody has an annual yet in the cannabis for Jersey City? So those are the two questions that I have, like, there's buffers in place, and were you guys aware that a lot of the micro businesses were going to be grouped? In primarily two locations like Jersey City Heights and in downtown Jersey City and also West Side Avenue. Which they all fall within two hundred feet of each other, so was planning aware of that? And if they were, like, what is the game plan, what's gonna happen? If multiple people get approved at the same time on the state level where they have their annual?
Gotcha, that's, uh. Matt, can you, uh, or elaborate on?
I I can take this question offline, we're only taking comments on this item, um, I think that if you have co- questions about this item. Or comments about this item, we can address those, but, uh, if you have questions, and Rafael, I believe I've spoken with you in the past. Uh, you have my contact information, uh, we can, we can certainly talk about this tomorrow.
Seems like we lost him, Matt, but if he calls, you can follow up with him offline, chairman, it's not appropriate to get into.
Sure.
Question posed by the member of the public.
Okay, is anybody else here from public that wants to comment, please raise your hand if you are. Uh, and if you're calling in and you wanna comment, please press star nine to raise your hands, anybody else?
There's seen no more public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded, public's closed, uh, Matt, we have your recommendation already, so, uh, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve and to send to the council for approval, case P two two dash two. Two zero three, which is a review and discussion of amendments to land development ordinance regarding cannabis establishment. And distributor regulations related to micro businesses.
All right, we have the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Uh, on a motion to recommend for adoption by city council, uh. Acting vice chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Oh, Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Lex.
Ah.
Motion carries on favor.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Corona, if you don't have my information, you can reach me at at the city planning telephone number. Uh, and you can search that online, thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt, all right, let's move on to item fifteen, is case P two two dash zero one four is a preliminary and final major site plan. With C variances for eighty Journal Square. All right, I believe we have Mister Vertebello.
Yes, sorry, my computer was a little slow, I think it went to sleep.
No worries, that's going around tonight, uh, council, good evening.
Uh, good evening, Mister Chairman, uh, Commissioners, uh, Robert Vertebello from the law firm of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Um, before we get started, this is a notice case, uh, it was carried with a preservation of notice from the November twenty-ninth. Uh, planning board hearing, uh, if we could mark our affidavit of service and publication as exhibit A one, please.
Evening, council, chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the eighty Journal Square application here this evening. All does appear to be in order, we can mark it as A one for purposes of the record.
All right, thank you, council.
All right, thank you, council, also, um, we're going to have presentation slides, we have, um. Thirty-six presentation slides, uh, mostly comprised of, um, documents that you already have as part of the, uh. Presentation package, but since it's in a different format, we'll mark those as exhibit A two, and again, it's a thirty-six, uh, presentation slides.
And council, you can just submit that then after the hearing to, uh, planning for purposes of the record.
Absolutely.
And council, those are gonna be part of Mister Marchetto's presentation, I assume?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yes, and and since we're on housekeeping, um, I think you've promoted everybody, uh, but I have, uh, Dean Marketo, who's the project architect. Along with, uh, Juan Rodriguez. Juan Rodriguez at his office. We have Chris Collins of Dresner Robin, who's our testifying engineer. And we have Samuel Bellamy, also from Dresner Robin, who is our testifying professional planner.
Mr. Marchetto, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give my, my introduction, and then we can swear the witnesses in as we go along. I'll take that as a cue not to speak too, too much.
Sorry.
Again, good evening, everybody. Robert Vertebello from the law firm of Connell Foley. This is an exciting project for me as a long-term resident of Jersey City. I'm sure anyone who's spent any time in Jersey City is familiar with C.H. Martin, which is a family-run and operated store with three locations in Jersey City. This is the store location that's in Journal Square. The Goldman family, who owns the C.H. Martin chain, they are remaining as a part of the development team, and they're very excited about the changes that have been happening in Journal Square. C.H. Martin has been an anchor in Journal Square for over 40 years, in good times and in bad, with all the changes that are happening in Journal Square, especially with the significant investment that the city is making in the neighboring Lowe's Theater. This seemed like a, a very opportune time to reinvest in Journal Square, which is what the, which is what the family is doing with their development partners. You'll hear from our development team this evening. We did have an eye towards what is happening with the Lowe's Theater as part of the development plan that's going on here. The goal was to try to devise an as-of-right building in accordance with these strictures of the redevelopment plan. However, as some of you may know from site visits or going to the store, this site is actually suspended above auxiliary tracks for the PATH system. We've had numerous and extensive and positive discussions with Port Authority. But as a result of that, there had to be certain accommodations made because of PATH track, the PATH tracks and the existing equipment that's below on the track level. And as a result of that, the positioning of the building, as you hear from our, from our project team, had to be shifted accordingly, and that's what's triggering a large number, if not all, of these deviations and variances that are being requested this evening. With that in mind, I'll call up my, well, before we get to that, one other housekeeping note, we did meet also with the Journal Square community group. We generally had a favorable reaction from the Neighborhood Association about what's being proposed here this evening. Again, we were trying, we are trying to keep within what's allowed by the redevelopment plan. We're also by having the variances, it did trigger the inclusionary zoning ordinance, which we are complying with. That's why there will be 40 affordable units, and we'll work obviously with the Affordable Housing Office to put all, as noted in the planning memo, to put all the appropriate agreements in place. So we're fully prepared to do that. And with that in mind, if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to my first witness, who will be the, who is the project architect, Dean Marketo.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, Dean, to raise. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And just state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Dean Marchetto, and it's M.A.R.C.H.E.T.T.O.
Thank you.
Mr. Marchetto, good evening. We've qualified you numerous times. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified. And you're testifying solely as an architect tonight, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to mention that I have a senior architect who worked with me on this project. He's in the audience. He's elevated as a panelist. And I may need him to answer some technical questions that may arrive. If you wanted to qualify him now, then you're welcome to, or however you'd like to proceed.
Why don't we get that person sworn in and qualified? And if we need to have anything answered, it'll just be quicker.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Juan Rodriguez.
Sir Rodriguez, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Juan Rodriguez, J.U.A.N.R.O.D.R.I.G.U.Z.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, good evening. I don't think we've qualified you, have we?
No, you have not, Chairman Langston.
Okay, we could just go over your background real quick and give us your license and licensing and the status of that license tonight.
Yep. I hold a Bachelor of Architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I am licensed with the state of New Jersey. My license is current and valid. I'm a senior architect here at Marchetta Higgins and Stevie, where over the course of several years, I've kind of led the design of various high-rise projects similar to the one that's going to be testified to tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Welcome, and you're qualified.
Thank you.
So with that, may I begin, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. Hopefully you can see my screen, and I'll begin.
We can, yes.
Okay, so let me start off with this photograph of the site. This is obviously a very prominent site in Jersey City. It's up here in Journal Square, right on Kennedy Boulevard, directly across from the Transportation Center, the PATH Transportation Center. And you can see the site is currently occupied by a one-story building with a basement. C.H. Martin, it's been there for many years, and the, the, the building is on columns above the, some of the tracks, auxiliary tracks below. We believe that this site offers a great opportunity to build a conforming kind of building, something that is intended to meet the goals and, and objectives of the redevelopment plan, and at the same time enhance the experience and complement the Lowe's Theater. The Lowe's Theater obviously is a landmark in Jersey City, and it's, it's a landmark in Journal Square, and it it is going to be undergoing a major renovation. Journal Square redevelopment plan obviously has a lot of density, has a lot of transportation, it has grid zoning, but we really don't have the pedestrian activity yet that we like, and this, 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 this redevelopment plan for the and the proposed renovations to the Lowe's Theater offers an opportunity to really activate the street level here in Journal Square. Together with the Pompadour Center, there's a lot of opportunity to now invigorate the pedestrian life in, in Journal Square. The next image here is a site plan. You see here with the Kennedy Boulevard on the right-hand side, the Lowe's Theater in this curved shape. This is a roof plan looking down from the sky. And the proposed building here is a, is a 28-story residential tower. The site is located in the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan, and it's in Zone 3. Zone 3 allows for a 27-story building, and this is a permitted use. It's a residential mixed-use building that will have residential units above two floors of office above retail lobby and service. And you could see here just to the north of the site, that the site is adjacent to, is adjacent to the, the railroad cut that goes to the Transportation Center underneath the Bridgeway at Kennedy Boulevard. And, and you can see here, the road in Kennedy Boulevard is shown in two different colors. The lighter color to the upper portion of the page is the bridge that goes over the cut. And this gray area here is where the bridge has then landed, and this is on, on terra firma here below. So this is our overall site plan, and Kennedy Boulevard is here on the right. And we envision this building as an opportunity to create a, an outdoor place or plaza that will support, that will support the activities and future performances for audience and, and theater goers at the Lowe's Theater. The Lowe's Theater here is on the bottom of the page. This is the sidewalk here on the right, and we're proposing a building that has a deep cut setback on the ground floor. It's set back 40 feet on the ground floor. And plus the sidewalk, it's 50-plus feet from the curb to the front of our building. We're proposing to put at the very front a retail space, which we hope to be a cafe or a restaurant, a theater cafe, and to create an outdoor plaza out in front where theater goers can queue up, get something, eat or drink before a show, or even during intermission, but to provide a respite in the sidewalk and the exterior pedestrian place in Journal Square adjacent to the theater. The, the, the building is a tower on a base, and what we're proposing here is a one-story retail space with a lobby that you would get to by coming down an alley. We've separated the building on the ground floor 20 feet from the Lowe's Theater, so you can create a walkway, which you have to go around to get into the lobby, the lobby to the residential building. There's also a separate lobby and entrance and elevator associated with the office. As I mentioned, the ground floor is retail and lobbies and service. The second, third floor are office space, and then above that is the residential component of the building, which rises to a total of 28 stories. You can see in this diagram, this ground floor plan, which is street level, the elevators and stairs, and then towards the northern end of the site, where the tracks would be, the existing railroad cut, we put our service on that side of the building, so that we have, we have our package room, we have our mailroom, we have our trash and recycling room, as well as our bike storage associated with sort of like a service entrance on the north side. So the south side provides pedestrian entrance for the users and services to the north. So this is the current condition. Over at, over at C.H. Martin, you see the existing store on the right. You see the Lowe's Theater. I'll remind you that the C.H. Martin store goes directly up against the side of the Lowe's Theater, and it doesn't separate, it's not separated. We felt like, you know, it would be an opportunity to relieve, relieve the building and, and separate our proposed building. So here is the existing condition, and now I'm gonna show you a simulation of what's proposed. Okay, so as I mentioned, we're proposing a 40-foot setback from the property line with the sidewalk. It's more than 50 feet, creating a retail space on the ground floor with outdoor dining, tables, chairs, sitting areas that would be adjacent to and enhance and support activities associated with the Lowe's Theater itself. And once the building reaches up past the first floor, it starts to step out in the two office floors up above. And then the residential building up above would, would shoot up to the, the total height of the building. On the right here, you'll be able to see that this is the northern side, which is where our service entrance would be, where you would have loading, where you would have trash pickup, where you would have, where you would have the bicycles as well, and as well as any kind of deliveries to the building would come through this northern edge of the site. Um, we, we felt very strongly that the design of the building should somehow come from, in some ways, you know, some of the spirit of the Lowe's Theater. This obviously is a great photograph of the inside of the Lowe's Theater, and, and typically in theaters, you have these wonderful curtains with the vertical, with these vertical lines that create the curtain, and that led us to an inspiration for the exterior design of the building on the upper portion. So when you look at the exterior part of the building, this is the upper residential part. It's a glass tower. And the glass tower is faceted with, and you'll see this in the plan, but it's faceted with individual sections for each room that will glow and, and reflect the light. But also to, I would guess, in a poetic or metaphorical way, kind of relate to the, the curtain, the, the stage curtain. And if you look at the base of the building, which you can see in this image, it's almost like the curtain has lifted and revealed the stage and the performance down below. That's kind of the general architectural concept of the building. And, and it comes from applying, applying the idea of, of the curtain being lifted. And you can see the height of that lift is, is, is related to the height of the Lowe's Theater, so that the Lowe's Theater becomes part of that setback open space on the ground floor, and really enhance the experience of the, of the theater goer. Let me now begin by just giving you a sense of, of how the building is organized and some of the constraints we have. In general, this is a tower on a base zoning, which allows for it's a 27-story building. And the current zoning, if you look at this lighter yellow color, is the base. That base is permitted to go up seven floors, and if you apply the setbacks and the setbacks, the darker color on the inside of this is the tower footprint that's allowed. And if you notice, the base is required to be five foot back from, from the Lowe's. And, and the upper portion of the building has a 30-foot setback. This is the constraints associated with the site. As I mentioned, and I'll show you photographs, as I mentioned, there are railroad tracks that go below the foundation or the basement level of this building, and this, and this area that we're showing here in, in red, and, and even the orange area where the building is permitted, those areas cannot receive foundations. We're not, we're not permitted due to the Port Authority and the security and the existing conditions with control stations and tracks to be able to drop foundations in that area. We're limited to providing new structure and foundations only in this area that is outlined in this blue dotted line, which creates a structural hardship for the project. I believe you will see that we've come up with a solution that turns this liability into an asset. So let me explain how we've been able to do that. Again, this is an aerial view. You can see Kennedy Boulevard, the project site, and C.H. Martin, Lowe's Theater here where my cursor is, and the tracks that go underneath Kennedy Boulevard under this bridge to the Transportation Center. And so this is a three-dimensional view of the existing conditions down at eye level. The Lowe's Theater is to the right. The C.H. Martin building is here with this red brick. And if you look at this photograph, you'll be able to see that the columns come down, the existing columns, and there's equipment and, and trailers and, and stations below, as well as these auxiliary tracks that go right below, right below the building. The existing building is a one-story building above the street plus a basement, so this is a two-story volume. And now I'll basically just try to construct for you how we were able to accomplish a building here. And this is the existing volume. If I take the building away, you can now see the columns that are existing. Those columns will remain. These white boxes in here are existing Port Authority utility structures that have to remain and will remain. This image now shows the no-build zone, which is this, call it a, a red color, and then the, the yellow color here is where we're able to drop foundations in. So you can see the foundations push us away from the tracks and move us closer to the Lowe's Theater. We're able to drop foundations in 52% of our lot. 48% of it is a no-build, no-foundation area zone. So if you build up out of that permitted foundation area, you see here we've located in this 3D diagram Permitted foundation area, you see here we've located in this three D diagram. Columns that were allowed to penetrate through. As well as the elevator core and stairwells that come up from the base. And this is the permitted. This is what Port Authority says we're allowed to do. It's almost where in that non-red area. And from here, in order to make a building that's big enough, that's required to be able to have a a a. A practical size of residential building, we're able to add. Diagonal columns that stretch out and they're shown here in yellow to widen the building. Almost like a cantilever and those uh those columns are then diagonally connected to the base of our foundation. It's sort of like a tree, the trunk comes up and then the branches come out. We worked very closely here with E Simone Structural Engineering out of New York City who. Who's done many buildings like this and and this was a solution. That allowed us to be able to build a building with that limited footprint of foundation area. Once we have the second level of columns up, then we connect those columns with a series of concrete slabs. Uh which are the which are the uh the floor slabs. And then we put a glass skin on the building. And this is how we achieve a floor plan that can accommodate the residential, the residential units. And then uh with the glass curtain wall on it and the amenity up on the roof. And then the uh the ground floor which holds the uh. Which holds the service and 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 the cafe retail area. And then the basement area which would be an amenity space, the existing basement area which is. The existing space that's suspended above the tracks. So this is a a a kind of a. A a tricky residential uh structural um solution, but it works. And I think the result is that we we will see that the diagonal columns that branch out like a tree. Uh which is caused by the tracks results in that kind of space that's cantilevered. Over the outdoor cafe area, uh creating that wonderful space uh that's associated with the Lowe's Theater. In terms of its exterior plaza area. So uh back to this, this is the um now the conclusion is a rendering from the uh from the uh. From the Jersey, uh Journal Square uh Path Station looking back at the Lowe's. You can see here again how the restaurant is set back and then the building steps out. And creates that carve out on the ground floor, creating that magnificent space of for outdoor use. And then the curtain being lifted and the the faceted uh faceted facade with the with the glass uh the glass materials. So now uh I'm going to just go through the plans quickly so that you can see uh in two dimension how it works. This is my site. The site has a no build zone which is this outlined in red. And then what you see here in these large squares are the existing columns that will be remaining. And then what you see here in these gray squares are the new columns coming down within the buildable zone area. And of course, the elevator stair and and uh vertical core is located. As close as we can to the no the no build zone. Uh on the on the north side. When you get up to the floor above. The tracks you're in what is the existing cellar. And that is going to be a residential amenity. We will have a a fitness room. And maybe a um a community room here. Um and then we have storage, we have our services down below. And the services will come in from from the right side here, which you'll see on the civil plans. And then back to the ground floor. We're going up now and we're at the ground floor. Again, you've seen this plan. This is the. The ground floor with the the fifty foot plaza out in front. Plus the retail cafe, the lobbies and a twenty foot separation here. So so. Building residents and office tenants can come into the lobbies off this this wide corridor. And then moving up above the ground floor, uh the building uh. The building uh is two stories of office. This is the second and third floor. And you could see these stretched out columns that are reaching out from the core. Those are those. Diagonal columns that come off the core and. And support the outer level of the cantilevered floor up above. So between the core and the exterior, it's about twenty five feet. Between the angle columns and the cantilever at the edge, we're able to extend the building twenty five feet. Uh over the no build area. And create a floor plan that provides adequate space for both office and residential units. Once we get above the ground floor, the building then has a setback from. From the Lowe's Theater of eleven foot two and that eleven foot two setback goes all the way up. And I I I want to remind you, as I showed you earlier, in the allowable zoning. You're able to bring a seven story building within five feet of the Lowe's Theater. But in this design, we're able to push it back to eleven foot two and still achieve and still achieve a usable footprint. So once we're above the office, this is our typical residential floor. This goes from four to twenty eight. You'll see the cores here and you'll see each one of these apartments has a bedroom and a living room. And each one of those rooms is stepped out like this. And it does that not only to capture views, more views looking east. Let's say towards Journal Square or New York City further and beyond, but it also creates that. That designed for the exterior wall which which is designed to mimic the uh the curtain and represent. The the stage curtain. And then um the the corridor is right down the middle here. You'll see that we have um. A a number of different unit types. Maybe at at this point, I'll just. Mention what we have in terms of the units. We have four hundred residential units in total. We have three thousand square feet. It's actually three thousand and thirty on that uh and that ground floor. Retail use which would be a cafe. We have seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty square feet of office space. On the two floors. And we have thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty five square feet of indoor amenities. Now of the four hundred residential units. We have thirty one percent of them. Are studio units, which is a total of one hundred and twenty five studio units. Um and they're distributed uh on each floor. Uh we have a hundred and fifty one bedroom units, which is thirty eight percent, and we have one hundred. Two bedroom units. Which is twenty five percent. And we have twenty five three bedroom units. Uh which are a total of twenty five units. And if you add all this up, it's four hundred residential units. I'd also mention, uh because we have uh variances, we are required to comply with the I Z O. Uh and so of of our four hundred units, forty units are affordable units. And you could see that the affordable units are located here and they uh they move up the building. Uh as necessary until we um a a accommodate forty. Of forty um affordable units. And of the four of forty affordable units. Eight are three bedrooms, twenty four are two bedrooms and eight of them are studio units. Okay, once we get up to um the floor, uh the top floor, the roof of the building. There's an indoor amenity space here which would be a community room, a room that the residents can use. Uh and then there's an exterior space associated with that room as well. So folks can come out and maybe. Get outside for a view up on their roof. Uh the elevator and stairs come up to this level. Then we have a boiler room and some mechanical equipment on the roof. Uh the balance of the roof is a green roof. So we do meet the requirements uh for the green roof in the plan. And uh one one uh one of the variances you'll you'll hear that we have is that. This indoor amenity, uh we we're asking for two feet of height. It's allowed to have a ten foot height on top. Oh in order to accommodate the height in the interior, we're asking for two feet. Uh for creating a ten foot ceiling and a twelve foot roof on this amenity. So that's one of the variances. Uh we we're requesting. I might want to just go back and mention one other variance if 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 I can step back. You can see here that there's a five foot setback. From the northern property line. Now remember, this is up against the tracks here. There's no buildings next to us. But this is another deviation. In order to get enough square footage to build an apartment, a building. Well and still maintain this clear open area, we we needed to encroach um. To to a to a five foot dimension from the northern property line. And our planner will talk about those uh about those variances during his customer. So I'll go back here. This is an overall uh section, so you get a sense to see uh what's. What's at the grade level here and then the basement or cellar below. The foundations below that, the retail and lobby space at twenty feet height. And then there's a twenty foot wide uh twenty foot wide um. Separation here for folks to get back to their lobbies and then the two stories of office. The eleven foot two step back, the setback from the Lowe's Theater and then the residential apartments coming up to twenty eight floors. And this next image is a close up of the front elevation. Uh so you can see that separation. The Lowe's Theater is here on the light on the left. And the Lowe's Theater does curve around as it moves back. And so does our building and it stays consistent consistently eleven feet from the Lowe's and um. And twenty feet on the ground floor separation. And again, this marquee cafe, which is. Uh a placeholder for uh an establishment that would come in. That placeholder is a is a fifty plus foot setback from the curb. And in terms of materials, the basic form uh of of the tower will be a a glass curtain wall structure. There are no P Tacs. Uh we have a mechanical uh mechanical uh headroom of equipment up on the roof. Which which is another one of the variances that we'll be requesting. The um the roof equipment is allowed to be a maximum of thirty foot high above the roof. And we're requesting a a deviation to allow us to build the mechanical uh equipment at thirty seven feet. Uh so we have a completely um internalized HVAC system and do not have to penetrate this facade with the P TAC grills. And so that's the main material on the facade. Uh there are some stone bandings. That pick up and I'll go back here. You see here, uh there are horizontal bands between the floors. It'll be made out of a cementitious panel, um which is designed to match and mimic. The texture and finish of the uh of the stone on the Lowe's Theater. So we have some continuity of materiality. Um and then and then if I come back and you'll see that the um. The uh framework for the storefront, the glass, the doors, all the framework. Is intended to be a a metal panel. So it's really two colors. It's glass and metal panel. Uh and then the the cementitious panel here will be a smooth um. Cementitious like a like a stone, like a stone veneer that will uh pick up on the color of. Uh and texture of this of of the Lowe's Theater. And then this is another rendering from the distance from right across the street. You can see here. Uh in this photograph, the relationship between the angled, the angled tree columns coming out. That is uh requirement to get the square footage, but it also allows for this. For this cave out or carve out, create that space next to the Lowe's. And uh the separation here from the Lowe's Theater, you can see. Uh as well as the glass tower rising from from the base. And then uh the final uh image of 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 that space. What I'd like to do now is um. I have two more documents. Submitted uh with the uh with the application. We have the. Visual impact assessment, uh which I'll just take you through quickly. We uh we we found that there were two major views that you would get uh of this. Building coming on seventy eight, coming into Jersey City as you approach. The Holland Tunnel and as you leave the Holland Tunnel and you're heading out. Uh let's say towards the Pulaski Skyway on one thirty nine. Uh these are the two views from distance that you would see. Uh the building is located here just. To the uh west of 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 the path station here. And the first view that we're gonna look at is coming out of the Holland Tunnel, moving up towards Journal Square. Towards the turnpike, up up the uh the ramp to to uh. To to the Pulaski Skyway. You could see in this image. The uh Journal Square Tower is uh here and Journal, uh eighty Journal Square Project is shown here in scale. So you could see how i- the the horizon is impacted by by the twenty eight story building from this point of view. And um the next uh the next image is if you're coming in. To Jersey City on seventy eight and you're approaching uh the Holland Tunnel. On your left, you see the Journal Square Project, which is right on the train station, uh as you know. And then the eighty Journal Square Project here to the left. You could see Beacon here on the left. Old Medical Center and the uh impact and visual analysis that you would see of how Journal eighty Journal Square. Uh would would fit into the 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 horizon uh from this from this vantage point. Uh these are the elevations. Um the visual impact study requires that we identify where the uppermost floor is on this. So these are just elevations with some 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 numerical heights in terms of feet. You see the elevation of Kennedy Boulevard. The the image on your left is the is the east elevation. Again, it's all glass. With the amenity room up on the roof and the mechanical above that. And this one uh on the right is the west elevation. Uh with Kennedy Boulevard here in this dark line. Uh the foundations below with the basement, the glass tower going up and then uh the mechanical uh up on the roof. And these are uh north and south elevations. This is the elevation on the right that that would be on the tracks. Facing towards uh the the railroad cut. And this is the elevation here that would be uh facing south. Uh above the Lowe's um. With the Lowe's in the foreground. And uh just finally on the visual impact assessment, I would like to just, you know. Reiterate the uh the inspiration for establishing the exterior glass skin with the uh serrated lines. From emanating out of the curtain. And then uh the overall uh image of from from the path station. Uh showing the relationship of the space down below and the curtain lifting. And 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 then the performance taking place out here in the plaza. And the final, the final view of that. Um so some nice words here about about a- about the intent of the design. And then finally, um. The shadow study. Um this is a. A shadow study. Um you'll see here in in this image, there are four seasons. There's a spring equinox. Equinox on March twenty first, the summer solstice, the fall equinox and the winter solstice. The building is located here and I'll take you through the shadow movement uh throughout the day on all four of these seasons. Going to move this way and um. As you can see, as I move ten AM, eleven AM. Twelve. The shadow falls mostly towards the north. So the shadow falls mostly towards the tracks. Uh and 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 east and west over over Kennedy Boulevard and the tracks. And it is a point tower, so the shadow moves very quickly. As you can see, as I move from one PM to two PM, the shadow. Because it's a um because it's a point tower, it moves quickly across uh across and by seven PM. It it's gone in three seasons and it just lingers towards the end of the day. So because the building is up against. Uh the south side of the tracks, the shadow falls mostly uh mostly on the on on the north side. And not on neighboring residential buildings. Um, uh, with that, I, uh, would like to say that that concludes my, uh, my presentation. And, um, and, uh, would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marchetto. Uh, um, one thing I do want to ask is about the affordable units. Uh, do you have an idea what the mix is?
Yes, there are eight studio units. There are twenty four two bedroom units and eight three bedroom units.
Excellent. So no one bedrooms.
At this time, there was no one bedrooms. That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, one thing I always ask is, uh, those units would have the same materials, the same, uh, layout as the other units in the building? There would be no difference between any of those units?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, that's it for me on questions. I appreciate the detailed presentation. Anybody else? Any questions?
This is Dr. Desai.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Uh, I'm concerned you have no parking in the building. That's one thing.
Yes, there, there is no parking. This building, uh, is directly, uh, across the street from probably one of the largest transportation centers. The plan encourages the use of mass transit and it's parking, uh, here is not required. Uh, so, uh, we didn't want to contribute, uh, first of all, it's very difficult to even try to book, think you can get a garage in this site. Um, we did meet with the county, uh, we, we met with the county because Kennedy Boulevard is a, a county road. And there was a concern about crossing the sidewalk here and bringing a vehicle onto this platform. Remember this platform, the first forty feet is a no build zone from Kennedy Boulevard. So we have to rely on the existing structure. And, uh, our engineers, uh, determined that you couldn't build, uh, you couldn't have a truck or, or cars or vehicles cross over onto this, uh, onto this and that the platform wouldn't support vehicles. So it's a technical concern, but it's also not required. And because we're on the mass transit, uh, transportation center, uh, we don't have parking.
Uh, I have a second question. Uh, the building is next to the trains and, uh, or, uh, impact of passing the train there? Have you, have you studied, your engineers have studied the impact of trains passing over there?
Yes, yes, we had our structural engineer work very closely with the port authority engineers. There were several meetings and, uh, uh, an easement and a solution was arrived at. And, uh, it's represented here in this design.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Um,
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marcelo, I just, just now, uh, later on, I'm gonna make a comment on, on this song. Out of Romeo and Juliet. Um, but now that you brought up, when they, the question that the commissioner brought up about parking, um, and, and I understand no parking in the area, but the alleyway that you're having the delivery, um, nothing is, uh, is anything going to be driving on that spot to make those deliveries? And then with that garbage removal in the building, how would the garbage be taken out of the building? Um, if no trucks or anything go on top of that sidewalk?
Yes, so, so we have, uh, spoken to the county about providing a loading zone directly in front of this site. And that we would then load the building and remove trash from, uh, moving through the service alley that you could see in this rendering out to the curb. And then that, that's where we have a loading zone. And, and the civil engineer will show that, but if you like, I, I can show you where.
No, that, that's okay. Well, I, I can wait for what he shows it. Just the other thing would be, um, even with people moving in and out would be the same thing.
Yes, the loading zone would be right here, Commissioner. And that the truck would, would be arranged, move, move-ins would be programmed. We'd know when they came, same with garbage pickup. And there would be, um, containers, rolling containers that would come out to this location where the loading zone is. And the same thing with loading into the building. Come through this service corridor on the north side and separate, but, you know, the service from the pedestrians, uh, entering the building as residents on the other side.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Anything for Mr. Marchetto? All right, thank you, Mr. Marchetto. We appreciate it.
Okay, let me see if I can unshare my screen.
Uh, Counselor, you're muted.
Yeah, I was having trouble with, uh, showing the graphic and, uh, audio at the same time, so I shut myself down. Um, the next witness will be our, uh, project engineer, Chris Collins.
Sure.
Collins, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name.
Christopher Collins, that's C H R I S T O P H E R C O L L I N S.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Good evening, yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. And everyone safe?
We can, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this project is, uh, located in lot sixteen of block nine four oh three. Um, and as Mr. Marchetto mentioned, this is an overbuilt site. Um, and so it creates kind of a unique condition, um, in that the whole site is basically a roof. Um, it occupies just under half an acre, uh, in area. And it's located in the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan, zone three, commercial center. Um, its only frontage is on John F. Kennedy Boulevard, which, uh, is a county road, uh, owned and maintained by Hudson County. Um, and, uh, as was stated before, directly across the street is the Journal Square, uh, Transportation Center, um, which offers, uh, bus service and, uh, path train service. In addition to the four hundred, uh, residential units, um, we are providing, uh, two hundred and one indoor bicycle spaces, uh, to meet the Jersey City LDO bicycle parking requirements, uh, as well as four outdoor bicycle parking spaces, uh, also to meet those requirements. JFK Boulevard is a, uh, two-way road, uh, separated by a median. Um, it's a very wide road. You can't even see the other side of the street, um, in the frame here. The existing sidewalk is approximately sixteen feet wide. Uh, and as Mr. Marchetto mentioned, uh, we are extending the public realm, uh, further into the site by about forty feet. Um, so it'll be a, a, a public plaza that is approximately fifty six feet wide. The loading zone, um, that, uh, was just discussed before, uh, is proposed on John F. Kennedy Boulevard. Um, it will be subject to the county approval. Uh, but as currently proposed, it's, uh, just under nine feet wide and, um, at, at one end, ten feet wide and the other, uh, kind of tapers with the road and is about eighty feet long. Uh, we are asking for a deviation from the Jersey City LDO, uh, loading requirements because the seventeen thousand square feet of office space, uh, triggers the first loading berth, um, uh, which is, which would be required at the first ten thousand square feet of office. Um, so, uh, Mr. Bellamy, the planner will, uh, will address that in his testimony. Uh, the pavers here are precast concrete pavers, uh, mimicking the, um, the pavers that are elsewhere in the, uh, Journal Square area. Um, and then accenting the retails, uh, or cafe space, um, is another section of a, of a slightly different, uh, uh, size and shape paver, um, again, highlighting that retail space and providing an opportunity for, uh, cafe seating. Uh, and again, because of the unique, uh, situation with the site in that it's an overbuild, um, we're asking for a waiver from the Jersey City street tree requirements. Um, as opposed to the standard five by ten in-ground tree pit, uh, we are proposing, uh, elevated, uh, planters, uh, that are five foot by five foot. Um, so we were able to still provide street trees, um, albeit in, in a, uh, a non-standard, uh, form. The existing street lights will remain. Um, I'll switch over to the lighting plan. Quickly. Uh, the existing, uh, lights will remain. Uh, there are two, uh, of the globe type fixtures that are on the street frontage. Um, and I believe there's some additional bridge lighting, uh, just off of property as well. Um, these fixtures are supposed to, uh, uh, be replaced in kind if they're, uh, in poor condition, um, or, or, uh, or, I'm sorry, repaired if they are, um, if they're in poor condition or replaced in kind with, um, an identical or similar fixture. Um, in addition to those street lights, you have, uh, a series of accent lights in the landscape areas. Um, in addition to downlights where the building, uh, canna levers over the plaza, uh, as you can see here. And again, just to, to, uh, provide some greenery, um, there's a series of raised planters, uh, within the plaza, um, of varying heights, um, with, uh, with plantings. Going back to, uh, utilities, um, again, because of the unique nature of the site, um, we have to provide utilities through a very narrow corridor, uh, on the south side of the building into the, um, into the lower level of, of the building. Uh, we're very constrained with where those utilities can go. As you can see here, this is the dividing line between, uh, the bridge structure and, uh, terra firma. So we are proposing, um, all of our utility connections, uh, within this, uh, this small zone. Um, we will have to extend, uh, the JCMUA sewer, uh, farther north to be able to provide a connection point uh, for, uh, stormwater discharge as well as sanitary sewer. Um, and, uh, we have been coordinating with PSCNG on the, um, transformer locations. Um, as of right now, they are supposed to be in-ground vaults within the street. Uh, we believe based on the information that we currently have, um, that there's enough space for them in this location. Um, and we've received comments from, uh, Jersey Division of Engineering as well as the JCMUA. Um, and we don't take any except, and take any exception to those comments. We'll work with them to, to address those. And that, uh, concludes my testimony.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Um, yeah, the only question I had was about the, uh, engineering comments and the M U A comments, so I appreciate that. Uh, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Collins? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Bridget, do you want to get a break in before we hear from Mr. Bellamy?
Great, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, uh, is five good enough for you?
Okay.
Okay, it's, uh, eight fifty nine. We'll be back at, uh, let's just call it nine oh five, everybody.
Okay.
All right, could we come to order again, everybody?
Okay.
All right, go ahead, counsel.
Okay, uh, before I call up our, uh, last witness, uh, Mr. Bellamy, uh, one thing I just wanted to, uh, mention which I, um, uh, might have mentioned partly in my intro, uh, but it's come to my attention with the, um, the discussion of the loading zone is just for the, uh, board's edification, we have had extensive, uh, conversations through twenty twenty-one and to the present with, uh, the county division of planning, um, and engineering, uh, we, a- as noted earlier, we given that this is a county road, uh, that, uh, JFK Boulevard is, we will be applying or reapplying actually to, uh, the, the county planning board, uh, for approval. Uh, the only reason why I mentioned that is even with the loading zone concept, the county is fully aware of it and we've been in constant contact and discussions with them. We're also aware that the county is planning certain upgrades, um, to crosswalks and I think, um, uh, the traffic, uh, patterns in Journal Square, so we're staying in constant contact with the county. Uh, we've also been in, uh, contact with the, uh, development team for the Lowe's Theater, uh, which is one of the asks that the county uh, asked of us is to keep in contact with them as they're moving forward. So I just wanted to state for the record that we're aware of all this and we're in contact with everybody, uh, including, like I said, Port Authority, uh, so there are no surprises. And with that, I'll, uh, turn it over to our final witness, our, uh, professional planner, uh, Samuel Bellamy.
Rachel Reinheim. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
Of course, Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening. We've qualified you numerous times, uh, your license is current tonight?
Yes, uh, good evening. My license is current and in good standing.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
Great, um, so our, our project team really introduced a lot of the deviations that we're asking for tonight, so I'll try to just, um, you know, build off of what the, the testimony that was already given. Um, as you heard throughout the presentation, this property certainly does have some unique conditions in that it is an air rights parcel over the path right away and associated path tracks and, uh, equipment down below. Um, so that unique condition, um, does create some, uh, design challenges um, and really dictates some of the, the building orientation and building, overall building design. Um, so that is akin to a hardship in, in developing this property. Um, as you heard throughout Mr. Marchetto's testimony, um, we really took those, those challenges and I think we, we came up with, uh, you know, great solutions that do represent better design alternatives. Um, and certainly that the, the benefits of the deviations that I'll, I'll go through would outweigh any detriments here. Um, so getting to the first grouping of deviations are related to the tower and the base requirements. Um, so we are asking for a front yard tower setback of thirteen feet where a minimum of fifteen feet is required. The side yard tower setback of five feet, um, where a minimum of twenty feet is required in a residential tower diagonal of one hundred eighty-five point nine two feet where, uh, one hundred eighty feet is permitted. And then finally, a, a setback from the lot line of a lower density zone of eleven point two feet where a minimum of thirty feet is required. Um, so first, building off of what the testimony Mr. Marchetto gave, um, and as he referred to as the no build zone, um, the path tracks and equipment really are, are located in the northeast corner of the property. Um, so that the orientation and overall design of the, the building footprint was kind of based on where we could put the columns and, and the, uh, orientate this building to, to put what we think is, um, consistent with the intent and overall, um, massing that's intended for this property. Um, so the, the side with respect to the side yard tower setback deviation, we're proposing the minimum of five feet and that's in the far northwest corner of the property. On that, and as you go closer to Kennedy Boulevard, um, that setback increases, um, to a maximum fifty-five feet from the north side lot line from the, from the front northeast corner. So really it's again orientated from from the back to the front, um, in a diagonal, um, pattern there. Um, with respect to the front yard tower setback deviation, um, we're proposing a range of thirteen feet from the outermost, um, as Mr. Marchetto described as a serrated building edge, the, the, um, to fifteen feet, feet to the innermost serrated building edge, um, and that creates that current like design element um, that is intended to provide an overall better design and, um, complement the historic Lowe's Theater property while still allowing for light and, um, air, um, to the adjacent buildings. Um, with respect to the setback from the lot line of a lower density zone deviation, the south light lot line of the property is adjacent to zone six preservation of the redevelopment plan. Um, that property consists of the Lowe's Theater and based on the restrictive requirements of that zone, um, zone six is inherently a lower density zone. So, um, with that comes the, the, the additional setback requirements um, where thirty feet is required from a tower to be set back from that, um, adjacent property. The requirement for a base is a five-foot setback, um, as Mr. Marchetto mentioned, we are increasing that setback to provide for the, the walkway along the, uh, southern side of the building. Um, and really that isn't an afterthought that, 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 uh, walkway area. We do have the main entrances to the residential lobby and the office, that area is appropriate, uh, light, um. There's appropriate light in that walkway along with landscaping and, um, design elements to really continue the pedestrian plaza in the front of the building, um, around the, the side of the building there. Um, we are also providing the pedestrian plaza in front of the building and that interacts with the adjacent theater and act further activates the streets, uh, streetscape. And then above the ground floor, the, the tower setback is eleven foot from the side lot line. Um, so that still does allow for appropriate light air and open space between the adjacent building. And really where that, that tower setback comes into play, it, um, rises above the building. So there's a, the greater setback where you're, um, at the same height as the theater and then above that, that's where the, the setback reduces, um. With respect to the diagonal dimension requested, again, this really is triggered by the, um, design constraints on the property. Um, so there's not a standard rectangular footprint for the tower as, um, really that diagonal dimension is, um, intended to, um, restrict. Um, so we do have a greater diagonal dimension, um, for the two furthest points, but overall and predominantly, um, the tower footprint is, um, complying with the maximum diagonal, uh, dimension. Um, next, we'll get into the maximum building height. We are proposing a twenty-eight story building at three hundred two feet, eleven inches. And that's where a maximum building height of twenty-seven stories and two hundred ninety-three feet is permitted. Um, this project is complying with all minimum floor to ceiling height requirements. So the ground floor meets the minimum requirement at twenty feet. Um, both office floors will be, uh, fourteen feet, which is utilizing the full, um, additional, uh, height permitted for office bonus floors and then the residential floors, um, will all comply with the minimum, uh, nine foot floor to ceiling height. Um, so again, really with the constraint of the property of the no build area and the, and the constraints of the, the footprint, um, we added an additional story, but we think it's still keeping in line with the intent of of the overall, um, redevelopment plan for height. Um, the, the uppermost residential floor is, uh, fourteen feet, eleven inches. And again, that will comply with the, the maximum floor to ceiling height. Um, there, um, adjacent to the property are the, the path tracks on to the north and to the west. Um, so really there's no substantial detriment there, um, further, further west and to the north, you have zone ten, which does permit a greater um, building height and then to the east going towards the Journal Square Transportation Center, you have zone one, which again permits greater floors, uh, uh, greater building heights. Um, so overall, we think that what we're asking for the additional story and, and approximately ten feet of building height is consistent with the height and intensity of properties um, adjacent to the core of the Journal Square area. On the next group of deviations are really related to the, to the roof. Um, as Mr. Marchetto mentioned, we are proposing a twelve-foot floor to the top of roof height for the enclosed amenity space. The maximum requirement is ten feet and again, that's floor to the maximum, um, to the top of the roof rather than a floor to ceiling height. Um, what we're proposing is twelve feet, which, um, allows for, uh, an appropriate floor ceiling height of approximately ten feet, um, which is consistent with the residential, um, floor ceiling height requirements. Um, the facade materials of that enclosed many space are consistent with the overall facade of the building. It does meet the minimum glazing requirement and that, that space is integrated with the overall design of the building. Um, with respect to the rooftop of pertinence deviations, we're asking for thirty-seven feet for the rooftop structure and that's really for the, the cooling towers and, uh, and screening around them that again allows for the, the building design and for the cooling of a building of this size. Um, and then we have a, a a variance request for the, uh, minimum setback, uh, one foot of one inch for every foot of a pertinent height or twenty-seven point oh eight feet is required. Um, we are meeting the minimum ten-foot setback of the redevelopment plan. The one foot, one inch comes from the L D O, so we, we are asking for that deviation. Again, the screening is consistent with the overall facade of the building, um, it is centered on the building. Um, and it is consistent with the intent of the redevelopment plan to have the, the the overall screening and, and rooftop equipment integrated into the building design. Um, going back to the, to the floor to ceiling height of the ground floor, we are requesting again a consistent twenty-foot ground floor for ceiling height, which does run to the, um, within the, uh, thirty feet of the rear lot line. So there is a requirement that the maximum is twelve feet within the, within thirty feet of a rear lot line. Um, again, this provides for a consistent ground floor height, um, there's no substantial impact that the rear property line is, is over, um, the air rights parcel. So there's no, there's no direct property or building adjacent to, to this property. Um, Mr. Collins did mention the loading deviation, um, it's required because of the office space that we're proposing. Again, we're, we're coordinating with Hudson County to provide for an on-street loading space to allow for not only loading for the office space, but for the commercial space and, uh, and residential space and along with, you know, the, the, um, trash pickup and, and things of that nature. Um, given that this, this property is an air rights parcel, um, and given the, uh, constraints of, of below the property, um, really you can't have loading come onto the property um, due to the weight of the trucks and, and, uh, and cars, um, and then oh, and we are pr- pr- providing the public plaza in the front there. So overall the design with the benefits of the plaza would substantially outweigh any detriments there and that we are providing still an on-street loading space. Um, Mr. Collins did walk through the street tree waiver, so I would just say that I agree with this testimony. Um, really this is just a, a technical deviation due to, um, providing the street trees and planner boxes rather than um, in the ground and also due to the spacing, um, just with street lights and utility poles, I think providing for the number of street trees we're proposing is appropriate here. Um, overall, the project does promote several purposes of the municipal land use law, including a purpose A, appropriate use of the property. Um, in my opinion, the proposed setbacks do provide for adequate light air and open space, um, consistent on purpose C. This is a density appropriate for the area in Journal Square, this is on purpose E, and then overall, all the design considerations would certainly promote a desirable visual environment, concern, and, and consistent with purpose I. Um, in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare. Um, again, this, this project really effectuates the redevelopment plan and what's intended for this property. Um, we are providing a public plaza, which is not a requirement to activate the streetscape and contribute to the revitalization of the Journal Square area. And then we are meeting the I Z L by providing for the forty, forty affordable housing units. Um, likewise, there's no substantial impairment to the zone planner zoning ordinance. Again, I think this, this project does effectuate the redevelopment plan. Um, it does advance several of the objectives of the plan. I'm not going to list them all out. Um, but it's in general, it's consistent with revitalizing the Journal Square area, providing for mixed and most multiple use development and then providing for the affordable housing here um, and then utilizing the setbacks and, and design considerations. Um, so overall, I, I do think that the requested variances do meet both the C one and C two criteria and, um, that the, the project, the deviations can be granted and both the positive and negative criteria have been met. Um, that concludes my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might ask.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Uh, I have no questions for you. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel, you are still muted.
One of these days I'll get that right.
How long has your ever, I know.
Uh, that concludes our, uh, direct testimony, um. At, we have no, uh, further witnesses. Um, I can either give my conclusion now or I can see if there's any public comment.
Um, why don't we hold it until after public comment, if that works for you? Uh, I do have one more question that would probably be directed towards you. Um, I know you haven't met with the, uh, Division of Affordable Housing yet. Um, do we know what the income level we're looking at for the affordable units are?
Uh, I think this was eighty percent, given the, uh, zone that it is under the, uh, inclusionary zoning ordinance. That's my recollection.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So at this time, let's, uh, open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wishes to comment, please raise your hands. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand.
There's seen no more public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Matt, do you want to wrap us up or, uh, I'm sorry, counsel, do you want to give your, your closing statement now?
Sure, we just wanted to, uh, thank you for your time this evening. Um, we're very excited by this project. As you heard from our development team, a lot of, uh, thought and care was put into the, uh, design, given the, uh, the site considerations. Um, we did receive, uh, the, uh, planning review memo dated, uh, December eighth and also the engineering review memo dated, uh, November twenty-second. Um, we intend to, uh, comply and address the, uh, items, um, set forth in, in both of those, uh, memos. Um, so we have no objection or concerns with either. And with that, we would just ask, uh, subject to, uh, uh, staff's, uh, review, um, approval of this project.
All right. Thank you, counsel. All right, Matt, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, so I just wanted to go back to your last question. Uh, the I Z O does actually require a mix of, of low and moderate affordable housing. Um, and it does even require a small percentage of very low. Um, yeah, so that, that's all would be pursuant to an affordable housing agreement, which is one of the recommended conditions, um, in our staff memo. Uh, if, if the applicant needs more information, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to provide that in the interim, uh, until they get to that point later on, uh, should the project, uh, break ground. Uh, going, uh, back to the application in general, um, the direct testimony, uh, I think was very clear on, on providing testimony regarding the variances being requested, the design waivers uh, and the general scope of the application. Um, I believe there's additional questions, uh, that, that the commissioners would, would like to direct towards me. I'd be happy to field them. Um, this applicant has been, uh, uh, very forthcoming with, uh, meeting uh, staff's, uh, recommendations, uh, to the project. They also working with a very difficult site uh, and have clear hardships. Um, they are again complying with the I Z O. Um, and, uh, have put their proofs for the variances they requested on the record, uh, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero one four as presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation and conditions.
I'm sorry, video, um, what was the case number? That you said?
P two-two dash zero one four.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I heard in zero two four. Okay, so we have a motion for approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay, and a motion through with conditions acting vice chair Gangadin.
I just want to say what an incredible presentation and project. Love the design, very elegant. Um, for sure, it's a transformation for Journal Square, Kennedy Boulevard, and especially for the Low State or a great addition to Jersey City. Um, this makes me, uh, be a very proud resident of Jersey City to see this kind of a transformation. Um, I felt based on the variance as requested and based on the master plan, the variances are justifiable. What a great job. I vote I.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Torres.
I'll just uh kind of like overwhelmed here with the um presentation. Mission, um. Hello, your team, uh one of the others and the other members that are working that. Comes up with this concept of those railroad tracks and uh. When you see those columns in the middle. I couldn't understand how you were gonna get you be out of that. And you said, and it's built to come out of there. Um. It's an amazing project. It was a wonderful presentation. Um. I hope that uh it gets built soon so that people will come to Jersey City. And see an architectural project. Being done. Seems to be well done. What a, what an idea. Get out of the box. And um, I take my hat off to you guys. Uh. And I'm and I'm proud to see that type of building go up at Georgia Square. And uh lights all around that Low Theater. And uh to the C H Martin family. That's uh, we all have that dream to have a lot of pedestrians walking in other square. There are a lot of foot action once again, bigger than Georgia Square Community back live. Then I'm gonna vote a very big I. I hope it gets um started real soon. Thank you.
Commissioner Torres, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cruz.
Mm-hmm, I vote I.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah, I live in general square area more than forty years and I see development on general square. It has been awesome. We have this building coming up, which looks fantastic. And I think they have done a good architectural uh uh value on this. Plus, India Square is going to get the arches and this area is going to develop so well. So proud of General Square. I'm going to vote I.
Chairman Langston.
Um, yeah, I just want to uh congratulate Mr. Murchado and Mr. Rodriguez. Great design. Uh, it's a challenging site to say the least. Um, and I I think you really achieved a a nice statement piece that uh complements the well, the the lows very well. Um. I I think given the site, I I think the the deviations are more than. In line with uh. What you could work with. I don't think there's any detriment to the public good. Uh, I don't think there's any substantial impairment to the uh Journal Square Plan or the Master Plan. Um, I I really can't say enough here. Um. I I think that public plaza is going to be a great addition, being next to the lows as a uh. You know, a meeting place, a gathering place, a little spillover before and after a show. Um, and I certainly appreciate the affordable housing. And also the uh lack of P TAC units. It's always a plus to see uh no P TAC units on a building for me. So uh happily vote I. Uh, congratulations. Uh, great part, great project for the city.
Motion carries all favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's move on to uh item seventeen is case P two two dash zero five three is a preliminary and final major site plan for six ten Communipaw Avenue.
Motivating Stephen Joseph and Michael Higgins.
Uh, good, good evening, members of the board. Actually, I'll be presenting not Stephen today.
All right, great. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, um, Michael Higgins of the law firm Castano Quigley and Trami on behalf of the applicant. Uh, six ten Communipaw N J LLC. Um, first, I'd just like to confirm that the boards received our proof notice. Uh, we carried from November twenty ninth. Uh, with preservation of notice.
Good evening, Council Chairman. Counsel is correct. This matter was originally scheduled for November twenty ninth and was carried to tonight's meeting. Had the opportunity to view the notice affidavit of public proof of mailing. All does appear to be in order. The market is able for purposes of the record.
Okay, okay, thank you, counsel.
Great. Okay, so uh some context on this. This is six ten Communipaw Avenue. It's a block seventeen nine oh five lot twenty three. Um, it's located in the neighborhood mixed-use zone in the in the um Jackson Hill redevelopment area. Um, it's sort of in the middle of the block between uh Harrison and Communipaw Avenue. Um, currently a vacant lot. Um, and the 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 application before you today is for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Um, so the our our proposal seeks to improve the property with a four-story mixed-use building. Um, it's going to have total ten residential units. Uh, some commercial space on the ground floor and also. Residential on the ground floor, which is permitted in the neighborhood mixed-use zone, provided that it's thirty-five feet from the right way on Communipaw Avenue, which we're in compliance with. Um, there are no variances on this application. Um, I have two experts to present today uh to testify. We have our architect Alan Feld, and we also have our engineer Arthur Kuyan. I I I want to be mindful of the board's time. I don't know if um. We think it would be helpful to hear from the engineer afterwards, but we'll certainly have uh Alan testify first. Um, so if we could get Alan sworn in and he could walk us through the uh the plans.
Sure, let's uh let's hear from Mr. Feld and then um we'll tackle engineering when we come to it.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State and spell your name for the record, please.
Alan Feld, A L A N F E L D.
Thank you.
Mr. Feld, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you numerous times in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, current and in order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
I'm gonna try to share my screen. How is that look?
Okay, we got it.
Got it? So as was mentioned, um, this is a project to build an a new four-story building. On an existing lot. This lot faces Communipaw Avenue and extends to uh Harrison Avenue. It is in the Jackson Hill redevelopment zone. Oops. And um, we comply with all the required, all the yard and bulk setbacks. In that zone. I could go through all of them, but basically uh we comply with all the requirements. All the requirements. Uh, I'll just show you. So, this is the proposed site plan. Uh, we face Commut- Avenue on one side and Harrison Avenue on the other side. Uh, we will be planting a tree in both the front, the rear, and in the front on both sidewalks. These are. Um, just to go through the floor plans, uh, the basement has the utilities, it has the trash. Trash room. Um. Storage and it'll be the commercial storage uh in the basement. The building has again two entrances. Um. On on Communipaw is the commercial space facing Communipaw Avenue. And on Harrison Avenue is the entrance for the residential. Units. And and uh there is a uh storage for bike, bike storage at that entrance. And then there's a three-bedroom ADA compliant unit on the on the first floor at the at that. In the rear. On the second. Third and fourth floors are all similar. There's a two-bedroom unit in the front. A one-bedroom unit in the middle and a two-bedroom unit at the rear. That's the same. For the second, third. And fourth floors. There is a. There's no roof deck. There's a the A C compress, compresses are on the roof. And roof access for maintenance. Uh. This is the elevation on Communipaw Avenue. Is uh, this is this the retail entrance, the double doors, and you can see there's a a lot of glass. And uh metal panels. And black. Uh, window framing on the Communipaw Avenue side. And similar on the Harrison Avenue side, and this is the residential entrance. On each side is a flat uh stucco. And. Further, there's this isometric to give you a sense of what the building shape looks like. And this is a canopy signage detail for the commercial space. And then we have the shadow. Study. I'm trying to be brief, so we can finish tonight. And that uh is the end of my testimony.
All right, thank you, Mr. Feld. Um. So i- if I'm correct, your your main lobby, um mailroom buzzers and the sort is on not Harrison.
Harrison.
It's an in building. Okay.
Correct, yes.
But there's egress to either side of the building, right?
Yes, we require two staircases, two means of egress. So, we have a second means uh to Communipaw.
Okay, understood. Um. Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Feld. Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we uh want to hear any testimony from our engineer regarding uh there were a few supplemental materials? Uh, it's a site plan, traffic, um.
Counsel, I have to say I don't have any engineering concerns or questions at this point. Um. I'll ask the rest of the board. Anybody else?
No.
No, I don't have any concern.
Okay. All right, thank you, counsel.
Okay, that uh, that should conclude. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know there's. There's a opening for a public comment as well.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we'll open up for public comment right now. Um, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application. I see Val's hand up. Uh, anybody, uh, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Loaded though.
Do you raise your right ha- a hand to be sworn, Mr. V? Thank you. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Yeah, of course. It's Valeri Wierchowski, first name V A L E R I Y. Last name Wierchowski, that's V E R K H O V S K I Y.
Thank you.
Val, good evening. Always a pleasure. Uh, we have three minutes for you, sir.
Good evening, uh, uh, councilman, um, uh, chairman, my my pleasure as always. Um, it's it's always amazing, uh, um. It was get a call, I was just about to talk. Uh, it's always incredible to be part of the uh uh event and and being allowed to. Uh, give my two cents. Um, I have to say I'm extremely excited. For something like this being built on Communipaw Ave. Um, this Boulevard is arguably the most ex- most important uh street. Um, in Jersey City. Um, it is the entrance to a wonderful city and all the uh empty lots. Are a very sad thing to see. I am extremely excited for this building, uh, one that passes through this this area on a daily basis. I really can't wait for this to be built. I think it's extremely appropriate. Um, I think it's a beautiful building, uh, the fact that it will uh front Communipaw Ave. And uh Harrison is amazing. I look forward to other projects such as this one. And I can't wait for it to be built. So my my blessings and um my excitement to the applicant and everyone involved here. But thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thanks, Val. We appreciate it and uh enjoy your holidays, all right?
Oh, you too. Thank you. Happy holidays. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Reminding, thank you.
All right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand.
There's seen no more public. I move to close the public portion.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close public. We are closed. Um, I have no idea who's this is.
Mine, Francisco. Yeah.
Any comments?
Uh, so I'll be very brief. Um, it it was mentioned before, the applicant is not requesting any variances for this proposal. The building is within the height that is permitted. The Jackson Hill redevelopment plan allows. Um, lots up to three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet to have a maximum of four stories. And go up forty-five feet tall in height. Um, because the lot is a thorough lot. Uh, the building is able to cover a hundred percent of the lot. Um, and overall, the proposal. Is conforming to the redevelopment plan and staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Francisco.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash zero five three as presented to the board this evening. For approval with staff recommendation and conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Acting Vice Chairwoman Gangadin.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. And Chairman Langston.
You know, I I feel bad that this uh project's coming up right after eighty Journal Square. Um. Uh, I think this is. This is as important to me as eighty Journal Square is. Uh, I think this is a great addition to Communipaw. Uh, I think it's a great design and um it it's taken away that empty lot, so I I think this is a great project. I appreciate that there's no P TAC units here either and uh I'm vote I.
Um, motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Right, I think we definitely have time for one more. Uh, let's get to. Item eighteen is case P two two dash zero nine eight is a minor subdivision with C variance for one forty-six to one forty-eight Cater Ave.
All right, good evening again, everybody. Uh, Stephen Joseph Castano quickly trami for the applicant. This is a notice application, so I would like to confirm notices were received.
Thank you, counsel. I'm receive the affidavit of publication proof mailing with respect to application one forty-six dash one forty-eight Cater Ave here in the city. All appears to be in order. We're gonna mark him as a one for the record.
Great, thank you. Um, one forty-six, one forty-eight Cater. This is located on Cater Avenue. Between Rutgers Avenue and Ludlow Street. Uh, it's in our one zone. The lot is approximately fifty by one twenty-seven, so very oversized lot for the R one. It's developed with an existing building. What we are proposing to do is keep the existing building and subdivide and subdivide the lot into two new lots. Uh, approximately twenty-five by one thirty-one and twenty-five by one twenty-seven. It's a little irregular, so. Um, it's different from one side of that lot to the other. We need minor subdivision approval to do this. We also need variances for side yard setback and lot coverage. The problem with this subdivision is that we are proposing to keep the existing building. It's located in an awkward spot and the lots are currently developed um with a hundred percent lot coverage. So. In the purpose of the applicant's purpose here in subdividing is to develop the vacant lot. With a new two-family house completely conforming, does not require planning board approval. If we did require planning board approval for the new construction, um, the lot coverage issue would, would not exist because that would be cleared up when we, when we develop. So I've been working with Francisco to try to neutralize these two variances. Um, what we came up with is an easement for the existing building. You'll see this on the plans. The existing building is nearly on the lot line that creates a side yard setback variance. We're not closing up the windows in order to keep the light in air. I'm sorry, Bridget.
New building is nearly on the lot line, which creates.
Which creates, um, which creates the side yard setback variance. The existing windows on the existing building, we're not filling them in. That could also cure the issue. But to keep the light in air in the existing units, uh, we're not proposing to do that. So we're going to record an easement which prevents anything from being developed within that's, uh, setback area. For the lot coverage, um, what Francisco and I have been talking about is a, a condition of approval that prior to any development, the, the hundred percent lot coverage on the vacant lot, um, would be, would be conforming. Um, we can do that prior to perfection of the subdivision. That can be done. The only issue with that is I, I would be submitting a separate application at that point for an extension of the time to perfect the subdivision. Because one hundred and twenty days wouldn't be enough time for my client to dig up um, the entire lot and replace it with grass. The existing lot, we are proposing grass in the rear to cure the lot, existing lot coverage condition. Lot going on. Um, let's take a look at the plans. I think it will be a little bit more clear when Alan shows what's going on.
Sorry, I didn't see you there. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can I just state your name for the record?
Alan Feld. A L N F E L D.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Feld has been qualified tonight and is still under oath.
Oh.
Great.
Let me.
Yeah, if you could bring up your plan, Alan, uh, I think that'll.
One second. That's not what I want. Did it before. This is not. This is not. Something's not working.
Um. It, it's only one sheet, Alan, so I, I think I can, uh, I can go ahead and share my screen if that's okay with, with you, Alan and the board.
Yeah.
Okay. So let me do that. Okay. Whoa. There we go. Okay, so we should be able to see, uh, Alan's plan now, right?
We can, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if you can see my cursor.
You can't. You, you only see mine.
Okay. Well, on, on the on the left, it is the existing lot, uh, number eighteen, which shows the existing three-story, uh, uh, residential unit and the space to the right of that. That's the existing lot. So it's fifty, um, by a hundred and twenty-seven on one side and a hundred and thirty-five, I think, on, on the right-hand side. And so the proposal of the proposed site plan is to create, um, two, uh, twenty-five foot wide lots from the fifty-foot lot. And, um, each one would be, you know, one would be a hundred and twenty-seven feet deep. And the other one would be a hundred and thirty-one feet deep or a hundred and thirty-five feet deep. So both lots would conform to the R, this is the R one district to the minimum twenty-five hundred square feet and twenty-five minimum by a hundred feet deep lots. Uh, the issue that, uh, Stephen was talking about is that the exit, if we divide it twenty-five and twenty-five, uh, the new property line would be almost adjacent to the existing three-story frame house. And there are windows along that side. And this creates a side yard variance as well with the new lot line. On the opposite side, there is adequate side yard. There is room to get to the back of the property uh, from the left-hand side. So our solution, um, to to the side yard situation is to provide a, a three-foot wide easement on the right-hand side. So that nothing could be built within this easement area. And therefore it would not affect the windows that are alongside the existing three, three-story frame house. And basically that, that's the, uh, over.
Great. And, and Alan, the, um, so on the existing lot, we are proposing grass in the rear.
Correct.
And on, on the proposed lot, it's currently one hundred percent coverage. After the subdivision will also be one hundred percent coverage, correct?
Correct.
But in order to develop this lot, um, and not come back to the planning board, that would need to be, be cured, um, at zoning and then at the building department. Correct? Right. So the, so, you know, a-again, the, the, uh, chicken and egg scenario for, for my client is that we don't need planning board approval for the new building. Um, once subdivided, my client is not immediate, let, immediately ready to construct the building. Um, but we need to subdivide in order, in order to get that building there. So the, the coverage will eventually be be cured. That condition will no longer exist when the new building is constructed and, um, and like I said, I've been working with Francisco to try to come up with a condition that, that would satisfy the board. In, in addition to that, we are also agreeing to a single curb cut for use, uh, by both lots. So there, there will be a deed restriction on, on these properties no matter what.
So counsel, that curb cut, um, would be moved over in between the, the lot lines?
It would be moved over in between the, the new, the new lot lines, um. Or we would not have any parking for the existing building. So it's a, a single curb cut, um, for, for both lots.
Okay, and, and there would be a deed restriction on curb cuts in the future if that building was ever to be demolished?
Correct. We, we always do, um, a deed restriction when we're doing the, the single curb cut, whether it's located in the middle of the lots or if it's for only, uh, use by, by one lot. Um, we usually see the curb cut not centered when there's an existing building that doesn't have parking.
Okay, understood. Um, yeah, I was, I was a little confused when I first saw this. I know our agenda uh, lists, what is it, lot eighteen point oh one as being twenty-five by thirteen point two-three. So, uh, yeah, when I looked at the plan, um, I thought that grass area in the back was actually its own lot. Uh, so when, but the, the application reads right, uh, it's just a, a misprint on our, our, um, our form. Um. So when, when we're talking about a hundred percent lot coverage, the lot's paved? That's the problem here?
Correct, correct.
Okay, since it's one hundred percent impervious right now.
And there's no actual development proposed. That's, that's the issue. If, if we needed, um, approval for a building, we wouldn't be having this, this issue. It would just be part of the new, new application.
Okay, gotcha. Um, all right. Is that your presentation?
That concludes our direct testimony.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions?
Oh.
All right. Thank you, counsel. All right. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you were calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chair, see no more public. I, uh, would like to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded public is closed. Uh, Francisco, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, staff doesn't really have any other, uh, comments to add to this project. Um. I think only just, um, recommending approval with the conditions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero nine eight as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation and condition.
Second it.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Vice Chairwoman Gengeden.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Dr. Desai. I don't think she's muted. Commissioner Dr. Desai, you're muted.
Doctor Desai, are you out there?
And we wouldn't be able to move forward without five.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we have enough to forge.
Doctor Desai, are you out there?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
All right, we got.
Aye.
Okay, and Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too, counsel. Enjoy your holidays.
Thank you. Thank you. Same to you.
Thank you. Uh, all right, given the time and, uh, scope of our next application, uh, let's bring up Mr. Harrington real quick.
Voting Chuck.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel, good evening. To be honest, I didn't think we'd even get close to you tonight.
Well, we are, we're hoping. And we are, we're still hoping. We, uh, if I can indulge the board, uh, you know, these two matters could be heard together. They are pretty straightforward. We have, uh, presented to the HPC and have our certificate of appropriateness. Uh, we've presented to the Van Vors Association and we've been working with planning and Dan Reed extensively. So uh, I think, you know, it's not going to be ten minutes, but I think we could probably get it done in twenty minutes. Um, if, you know, if the board would, would indulge us.
I would, um, accept twenty minutes.
Okay, my team is, is on and they hear that.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. So for the record, Charles.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't call these items. Uh, so we're gonna call, uh, both of these together, um, item nineteen and twenty. They're both the same case number, P two-two dash zero five six. Uh, is for a preliminary and final major subdivision with C variance for one forty-three Columbus Avenue. Also a preliminary and final major site plan with C variance, uh, for one forty-three Columbus Drive.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, uh, Charles Aaron of Conne Foley on behalf of the applicant. So as noted, this is a subdivision and a site plan that is put together. Um, very, uh, quickly, this is the Columbus Corners redevelopment plan. Um, it is one lot. We are proposing to subdivide the one lot into, uh, five lots, um. And the, the subdivision is going to be consistent with the zoning districts. Um, so you're going to have the building at the corner of Columbus and Barrow. You're going to have a new building, seven-story building on Columbus Drive, and then you're going to have, uh, uh, townhouses in, in a small mid-rise, all the same size among Barrow Street in the, uh, the historic new construction district. And, uh, so we, we will need a, uh, variance for the lot size area, um, with regard to the subdivision just to create those, those new lots along those district lines. And then we're asking for one, uh, deviation with regard to the maximum building height. And you'll see during the presentation, uh, it's a little unique in that every, every other zone in Jersey City measures the height of the building to the top of the building, and then you have rooftop appurtenances, appurtenances that are permitted above that. This measures all the way to the top of the appurtenances. So, um, we're, 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 you'll see, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're within the, um, uh, it's a minor, a minor deviation. So, um, we did, as I noted there, we did go to Historic Preservation Commission. We were approved unanimously for, uh, a, uh, certificate of appropriateness. Um, so, uh, here we are, and I'm going to bring up, uh, our engineer, Matt Ryan, um, just to walk you through the site and the, and the subdivision. Then I'll, I'll put on Mr. Bodnar and, and, and Charles Height can just address these two minor variances. So Matt, you out there?
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure. Uh, Matthew Ryan, M A T T H E W R Y A N.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, good evening. Uh, your license is current tonight as an engineer?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, great.
Okay, Matt, if you could share your screen and, uh, um, walk us through the, the subdivision and the site. And Chairman, while that's happening, let's just mark the notices. I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. We'll mark them as a one for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel. I got ahead of myself there.
Mr. Harrington, in light of your opening statement, uh, I think we can just highlight breaking of the lots and then get into the deviation. Right, so, yeah, Matt, if you could just, if, that's the site, if you could just show how the, uh, uh, and we can mark this as a, well, the, the notices, I think, could be eight, a, a one and a two because it's, and I, I noticed for the subdivision and the site plan. So this would be a three.
Okay, uh, yeah, so you guys can see my screen?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, great. So I'll keep this really brief in the interest of the board's time. Um, so, uh, this is the first exhibit, uh, in existing conditions aerial exhibit prepared by our office. Uh, the site is located on the southeast corner of Christopher Columbus Drive and, uh, Barrow Street. Um, it's located within the Columbus Corners redevelopment plan. Um, but within that, that area, there are, um, three separate, uh, sub-districts within the lot. Uh, those are the historic rehab district, uh, which is just this existing building at the intersection. Uh, the historic new, new construction district, which is this portion of the lot along Barrow Street. And then the mixed-use new construction district, which is this portion of the lot uh, along, uh, Christopher Columbus Drive. Uh, so under existing conditions, this, the lot contains an existing four-and-a-half-story mixed-use, uh, retail and residential building, uh, as well as an existing commercial parking lot. Um, it's bordered to the north by, I, I don't have to walk through all, all the uses, I guess, to kind of speed through the time. Um, but I would just point out that there's no wetlands, uh, or no flood plain on the site. Um, so with that, I just want to, uh, jump over to my next exhibit, which is, uh, in, an aerial exhibit with the subdivision um, that Mr. Harrington had mentioned. So I guess this would get marked in as a four.
A four.
A four. Okay, great. So basically, this is the same exhibit, um, as the, the previous aerial. It just kind of shows, um, as Mr. Harrington mentioned, we are proposing to subdivide the lot into, uh, five different new lots, and that's really to respect the fact that this lot has the three different sub-districts, um, wi- within it. So, um, we're proposing this, um, lot one point oh one would be within the, uh, historic rehab district. The lots one point oh two, one point oh three, one point oh four are within the historic new construction district, and then the lot one point oh five is within the mixed-use, uh, new construction. The lots one point oh two, one point oh three, one point oh four are within the historic new construction district, and then the lot one point oh five is within the mixed-use, uh, new construction district. Um, I'll walk through, like, the proposed improvements and why it makes sense to subdivide it. Um, I guess one thing I just did want to point out is that we did receive input from the, um, tax assessor's office that. Um, the lots, um, should be renumbered and reordered. Um, we have no problem complying with that requirement, um, just for the purposes of this meeting. Uh, I'm just gonna be referring to them as they're currently shown, um, because that's the way, um, they're prepared on the plans, and I don't want to create any confusion. Um, we are, as Mr. Harrington mentioned, uh, requesting a variance for the lots. Um, and it's really just because the, the code requires, um. The subdivision to be developed as one contiguous building, and we're basically creating three different development types, so by nature, it, the lot areas are a variance. Um. That, that's pretty much it for the, uh, the subdivision, so I'll just kind of jump over to my next exhibit, um, which is a site plan rendering, um.
This will be marked. A book, we'll mark this as A five.
Marked in as A five, correct, yeah. Um, so this is a, a colorized version of the, the site plan that was included as, as part of the site plan package. Um, so, I'll briefly just walk through what's proposed for the site, so, uh. First, um, the existing commercial parking lot will be demolished. Um, and we're proposing to redevelop the site with mixed-use, um, residential and retail. Um, the, the portion, the existing building on the northeast, or sorry, the northwest corner of the lot. Um, will be renovated, um, with, uh, I apologize, this is actually a typo, um, the. It's correctly listed in the site plans, but it'll have one thousand eight hundred and nineteen square feet of ground floor, uh, commercial. Uh, as well as, uh, three residential, uh, units on top, um, the ground, uh, the ground floor area will stay the same, um, as well as the building height. Um. And there are no, uh, setback requirements for this, uh. Uh, sorry, the historic rehab district, so there's no setback requirements. Um, and the existing utilities will remain, um, in their current, uh, condition. Uh, just to the south of that is the, uh, historic new construction district. Um, we're proposing to construct, uh, four-story, uh. Ten townhomes, so it would be, uh, four different buildings, uh, with ten residential units. Um, I would also note that within this building, there is a, um, access point. Um, we're proposing to add a curb cut along Barrow Street. Um, and traffic would be able to access the building. Um, I'll get to this portion of the lot in a moment, um, but this, uh, lot one point oh five will contain, um, covered parking area. And the access will come through, um, these townhomes. One thing I just do want to briefly address. Um, the access is fifteen point four feet wide. Uh, and the engineer's memo did note that they had requested that, um, it be increased to eighteen feet. Um, we feel that the, um, the width is sufficient, um, particularly given the, the turnover and the amount of traffic that goes through. Uh, this access point, it really isn't intended for two-way circulation. Um, there's a garage door, um, which, um. At the front of this parking access, which is only ten feet wide, so it's really not intended for a continuous, um, turnover of traffic. Um, cars can obviously get in and out, but the intent is not that there'd be two cars passing through here at, at the same time. Um, and one thing that we would be willing to work out with the engineer as a conditional approval is some type of. Notification system where, you know, as a car was coming in or out of the site. Um, there'd be notifications on either side of the, um, the garage access, which would let a motorist know that, you know. There was traffic incoming from either direction. Um, so, in our opinion, just based on the volume of traffic that's anticipated through here, we feel that the, that fifteen point four foot width is sufficient. Um, there are no front inside yard setback requirements for this portion of the lot, there is a. Two-foot minimum rear yard setback requirement, we're proposing six feet. Um, and as far as utilities, um, each unit will have its own gas service. Um, however, each individual building, so there's four of them, will have, um, separate water and sewer connections. Um, and then moving on to this last portion of the lot, I'm trying to zip through this as fast as I can, um. This is a proposed, um, seven-story, uh, mixed-use. Um, I believe that this is slightly off as well, the ground floor retail would be three thousand five hundred and seventy square feet. And there would be fifty residential units above, um, the ground floor will have, um, at-grade parking, um, forty-four spaces. Two of those are just at-grade spaces, and the remainder of the parking spaces are, um, like motorized lifts. Um, the maximum la, uh, allowable parking for the lot is forty-five, and we're proposing to add forty-four. Um, and then just one other thing, as previously mentioned, um, we are requesting a variance for the maximum building height, um, eighty-seven feet is proposed. Um, whereas eighty feet is allowed. Um, and then just briefly, I just want to mention, like, we are proposing some streetscape improvements, um, along Christopher Columbus Drive and, and Barrow Street. We're proposing to, um, replace in kind or improve the streetscape, um. And the engineer did issue a memo, um, with some comments, we have no problem, um, complying with that. Um, and then, just in general, um, we did receive, or, or we did go through the engineer's letter. Um, we have no issues complying with all of the comments, just the only exception I have to that is, um, what I previously mentioned about the, um. The driveway width being fifteen point four feet.
Okay, I think, I think, Matt, uh, I mean, unless the, the board has questions, I think we could probably turn it over to, uh, Russ, because that, that they'll see it a lot better, uh, during that presentation.
Yep.
Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Ryan, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryan.
All right, thank you.
Or, uh, Russ?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, you know, forty-four car parking on this side, how many bike parking you have?
There's forty, uh, bike parking spaces.
So that exceeds the requirement of one half per, uh, per unit.
Okay, go ahead, Council.
Okay, Russ, you want to come up, uh, and walk us through the, uh, architectural? Maybe a slow run?
And if we could, uh, maybe we should swear in Mr. Bodnar and qualify him?
Yes.
Just say something, Russ, so I can see you.
Mr. Bodnar, you are muted. You, there you go.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name?
Yes, my name is Russell Bodnar, last name is B O D N A R, I reside at fifty-two Long Hill Road, and I, my license is incurred and in good standings with New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bodnar, we've qualified you in the past, and given your license is current, uh, you are qualified again.
Okay.
Russ, before you start, could we mark your presentation materials as A six, okay?
Okay. So, as you can see here, this is our, our new building, uh, on Columbus, it's our seven-story building from this, from this point to this point here, you can see my. My scroll mark, um, this is a seven-story building, in this building, we are proposing fifty units, the units is a mixed unit, uh, amount. There are twenty-one one bedrooms, five, seven hundred and fifty-four square feet. Uh, one-bedroom studies, and then we have, uh, twenty-six two-bedrooms, and they range between ten eighty square feet and fourteen ninety-eight square feet. And we have three, three-bedrooms that are eighteen hundred and thirty square feet located in this building, uh, uh, the, our main fifty-unit building. As you can remember, we just talked about the corner building, the corner building is an existing building. We are putting, it's right now a commercial building, we are converting it over from a commercial building to residential and commercial. There will be three units, uh, residential, each, each unit on the upper floors will be, um. Two bedrooms plus a study at sixteen hundred and thirty-five square feet. The lower area is, uh, commercial space and an entrance lobby. The, uh, lower level is actually half below grade and half above grade, so the total amount of commercial area we're gonna have is twelve eighty square feet on one level. And fifteen hundred and four square feet on another level. All right, let's go to, I'm just trying to do an overview real quick on this, um. I'm gonna go to the plans. Click for me. There you go. As you can see, this is, again, our building on the corner is our, uh, our existing building, we are renovating the building.
So one moment, we can't see what you're presenting.
Can't see it?
Yeah, we lost your screen share.
Lost your screenshot, how's that possible? Share screen. Share, all right. Could you get it now here? Why is this giving me a hard time? There it is, can you see it now?
Yes, we see the townhouses along Barrow.
Okay. All right, as you can see here, we have the townhouses along Barrow, and we have the existing building on the corner, the existing building, like I said, talked a, a moment ago, is gonna be exactly what we spoke about.
Please, Mr. Bodnar, slow down, please.
Okay, yes, sorry. Um, if we talk about Barrow Street, these are a series of four-story.
Building, as I talked about.
Oh, the, okay, as the building I've talked about is the corner building, the corner building is the renovation building. Um, as we go further into Barrow Street, this brand-new building, the red, this red building structure is our brand-new building, it is a four-story townhouse-type building. The last two buildings on this, on this location are gonna house two, two-bedroom duplex units, and these two buildings here at the end. This building here in the middle is a six-unit building in the middle. The, um, the six, the six-unit building in the middle actually has one unit above the, uh, one-one-bedroom unit above the, uh, above the drive aisle. And the rest of them are. The rest of them are two and three bedrooms, each of more duplexes, the two, the duplexes on the lower level, the first and second floor are thirteen hundred and eighty square feet. And the, the upper floors are seventeen hundred and forty-five square feet, three bedrooms. The one in the middle is a thirteen hundred and eighty square feet, two-bedroom unit. We also have roof decks along the top of the building, I'll show those again in plan. Let's move us back to. The, um, the plans of this. Come faster machine. There you go. All right, let's go to the, uh, the floor plans here, as we spoke earlier, this is our Columbia, Christopher Columbus Drive. Here's our building, our thirty, uh, three hundred, uh, three thousand five hundred and seventy square foot commercial space located in our seven-story building. We have a main lobby that comes in. On Columbus that enters our fifty-unit building, as you can see, here's our forty-four parking spaces in the rear of that build, uh, rear of that. Lot, and in that, we have stacker parking, so they're triple-stacker parking, um, systems that are actually automated, so when you push a button. Your car moves down in a certain fashion and comes to you, so then you can then drive it out. Here's that driveway aisle access area we were talking about earlier, it's fifteen feet, four inches wide, there's a door here at the end of this, um, access area. We feel like if we put a visual device here and a visual device out here. That says when anybody's entering this from either direction, you'll know when the visual device goes off, it will state. Ho- hold on for a second, or, or when you're coming in, you'll be able to see that and say, I'll just hold off a second before the person drives out. I think that's a, an idea that we were thinking about trying to do, let's talk to engineering about that, and hopefully they'll agree with us. Instead of going to the eighteen-foot-wide, um, accessway, because we're only allowed to really do a twelve-foot entranceway anyhow at the end. Because Historic requested that just last week, it was fifteen-four. Well, that last month, they asked us to reduce it because they didn't like the proximity of this door to the garage entranceway. So we ended up, and they wanted us to match the windows coming down on the front side, I could show that in a moment. As we go down, um. As we go down through the, through the plans. We actually have each of the apartments in the, um. In the, what do you call it, in the Barrow Street side, actually have exterior space, we felt that was very important, um, in Jersey City now, especially since COVID. So all the, uh, units here, except for the one above the, the one-bedroom above the access aisle. Have either a roof deck or a rear yard area to go out into, so the rear yard area is actually a nine-foot by a, eighteen-foot-wide. Space that each of the townhouse units have. On the first level, and on the upper level, they have about three hundred square feet of, of roof deck. Let's sit down there and take a look, um, further down. As you can see here, these roof decks are shown on each of the, on each of these units as you go up. And each of these units has their own private roof deck with their own private access. The one down at the end actually is a little different, it doesn't have a bulkhead, has a sky door that was requested by Historic. This entire building has been approved by Historic as well as the entire rehab building, we have spent. Uh, an excessive amount of time on that, probably almost a year, on getting these, this entire building designed. Uh, and, uh, approved by the Historic HPC. As you can see again here, if we look at the building here on our, on the right, the Christopher Columbus, these are a series of, um, single four units and duplex units. The duplex units are only on the upper level, except for this one spot, there is a duplex unit. As you go up in different locations, there's also some roof decks, I mean, some terrace decking on the back. And if we go down to the second floor level, we actually have a, an access, um, a deck above the garage, our building is set back fifteen feet. From the property line to the rear of the property. From this, this location, but we actually are set back two feet. To the, actually, garage portion. Uh, meeting with the, uh, neighborhood association, they asked for a planter bed to be put along the entire back. Of this, um, private terraces, and we put, we're gonna put arborvitae's and along the entire rear part of this, um, this building. So this way, nobody on their private deck's really looking over into somebody's private yard. They, they requested that, we, we said that would be not a problem, that's shown on our plans. Um, let's go further down. As you can see here, these are, again, these are just really just basically the drawing portions of that renderings like we showed earlier. As you can see, here's our building, at the top of our building is that, that height of that eighty-seven feet. Um, the, the problem with our eighty-seven feet high. Problem is our elevator goes to our roof deck, and since our roof deck has a, has rooms up there. Our elevator is a little bit higher and goes to eighty-seven feet, or actually, our roof is only seventy-five feet from the, from the street. So, that's, yeah. I can't get that to go, um, let's go down a little bit further. Excuse me? Um, dang, up, up above on the upper levels, I'm trying to get to some other levels here. This, um, this level here on the six-four is actually set back according to the, um. The redevelopment plan, so these units in the front are actually gonna be three-bedroom studies, and they actually have a terrace that's located in the front, it's a setback. So these units are a little different. Um, than the regular units that you can see on the lower levels, the penthouse has a lot more duplexes on it and much larger units. Let's kind of zip back off this, and I can, we can show that rear elevation of what's going on in terms of a rendering. That's this here. Okay, um, like I said earlier, we're doing, our rear wall itself is this, um, entirely brick wall here, uh, in the back of our building. This is actually two feet from the property line. We are actually giving or making an easement for the neighbors so they can use that two feet of space, we're not putting anything on that space or pretty much. Allocating that land to the people behind us. Because there's no way for us to maintain that two-foot strip of land, so I wrote that on the plans. And we also have, like I said, we made this concession to put a planter bed with a series of, of arborvitae's along the entire back. So nobody really is looking over at anybody on this location. What are the neighbors also asked, if we can break up the facade by not just having the gray? Dark gray brick in the back of the building. They asked if we can break it up with some red brick. We made a nice striping pattern to alleviate the fact that we would have. A, a different pattern, so you're not just looking at a big blank. Gray wall, we're looking at a red and str- red and gray brick wall. To, to add some appeal to the back of the, the back of the property. So, um. As you can see, we pretty much did a similar treatment to the rear of the building that we did in the front of the building. There's actually brick. And there, and there's metal panels on the rear of the building. We inset these decks in here. Um, to lend a little bit more privacy for some of the neighbors. So somebody standing out here, they're not really. Standing outside the building, they're standing with inside the space of the building. So they're not really peering out as much onto the neighbor's property. So we try to do that as much as possible while trying to give. A, a lot of the units' exterior space of their own, because in the last couple, like since COVID. Um, there's a lot of people have been asking for having their own private exterior space. I think that's pretty much, um, the, uh. My, wha- what we're, you know, my, uh, presentation for tonight. If we need anything else, I can be more than happy to go through more plans. But I don't, um, like I said, this has gone through. Many revisions, many revisions, and we also met with the neighborhood association more than once on this project already.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Bodnar. We appreciate it. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Okay, and I'm gonna just bring up Charles Height to, uh, briefly address the two requested, uh, deviations.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. Your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll, I'll jump right in. I, I know the hour is late. Uh, I do win the last expert testimony for the year award, so I'm, I'm privileged to be here again. Um, we have two technical, uh, deviations being requested tonight. With respect to, uh, the subdivision, we are formally requesting a lot size deviation. Um, the requirement, I'll read it from the redevelopment plan, is the entire, and I'm, I'm quoting. From the redevelopment plan, um, minimum lot size, the entire study area shall be developed comprehensively as one building. Um, so that's the, the language as it's written. It's not a numerical dimension for lot size. Um, here, the intent, as we heard from both of the prior experts, um, we're trying to. Organize and subdivide the property respective of the districts. And the overall building type. We have a mixed-use building, a historic building, and then the townhouse structures on Barrow. That's the intent. It's a very organized subdivision, and it will actually foster better, uh, ownership and management of the properties for years to come. The redevelopment plan does speak to subdivisions, um, but again, the overall proposed development is. Uh, a comprehensive proposal, so it speaks to that intent. Um, those are the benefits. Uh, the negative impacts, from my opinion, um, there are no, no negative impacts from a physical standpoint on the general welfare. Uh, the ownership, um, of the subdivided properties will actually lend itself to better, uh, ownership and management long-term. So I don't see any substantial detriment to the, uh, public welfare. Um, with, with, with respect to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Uh, the proposed subdivisions, uh, still allow for all of the site plan requirements. Uh, that you saw tonight to be complied with, the coverage, the setbacks, the stepbacks. So from a physical standpoint, these subdivided, subdivided lots are still very, uh, appropriate for the, uh, for the proposed application. So there's no impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. It actually helps. Institute the, the districts of the redevelopment plan better. Um, with respect to the building height, uh, one other thing I wanted to call out, um, the ground floor plan. Uh, does allow for fifteen-foot minimum floor-to-ceiling height. So there's two aspects that we're able to accomplish there. We have a. Greater ground floor-to-ceiling height for the commercial space, which is typically favored. Uh, and also, we're able to accommodate that stacker system in that elevated. Floor-to-ceiling height on the ground floor. Uh, when you do move up. To the upper floors, we meet the minimum nine feet. Um, we actually are at nine feet, six inches floor-to-ceiling height, so there's no compression. Of the overall building height here. We're permitted seven stories, we're proposing seven stories. Uh, and then obviously, when you get up to the roof with the bulkhead. Uh, this is the only plan that I've experienced. In Jersey City that measures to the top of the. Appertinent structures, the, the roof of the bulkhead. Typically, it's to the roof of the roof deck that we just heard from Mr. Bodnar is seventy-five feet, which complies with the eighty permitted. But. Being technical, we measure as per the redevelopment plan, which states to the top of the roof bulkhead. Um, which is that eighty-seven-foot-eight-inch dimension. So, um, this, the bulkheads are not a full floor. There are a portion of the floors below. Um, they're located center into that in, of the, um. Overall footprint of that seven-story structure. So from a, a light and air standpoint, they don't cast any additional stat, shadows. Uh, of a substantial magnitude. Um, based on that, I don't think there's any impairment. To the general welfare with the added height, uh, and with respect to the, the, to the redevelopment plan, as I said earlier. Um, we comply with all coverage, setbacks, stepbacks. Uh, as well as, um, the minimum, the, the minimum number of stories being seven stories. So, uh, I don't believe there's any substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Um, that's my testimony. It's great to see everyone, and I, I wish everyone well and good health through the end of the year.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Height. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else? Alright, thank you, sir.
Okay. So that, that would complete our presentation. I just note a couple of things. We are requesting, uh, the board. The grant relief from the, the comment number three with, uh, in the, in the review letter with regard to the width of the, uh. Access drive. Um, and, you know, for you to consider that. Um, and just the comprehensive development, you'll see in, in Mr. Ward's, uh, uh, staff report, there are conditions that we agreed to, uh, meaning that. The corner building has to be started first. Um, and, uh, we also have to terminate the parking lot use before we perfect the subdivision. And then where we are required, uh, to get a CO or, um, uh, at the corner building before we can get any TCO or CO at the other. The other buildings with the intent that it's a very important building on the corner, and, and we have to get that done first.
Okay, understood. Um. Let's open it up for public comment now. Anybody in the public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Jersey, no, there is no one from public. I'd like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Matt, do you want to wrap up?
Sure. In, in addition to, uh. The applicant putting on the record that they'll comply with staff conditions with the, the exception of the access drive comment from engineering, which city planning staff supports. Um, granting them relief from. Uh, there are numerous other conditions that were, uh. There are, apply to the project under the certificate of appropriateness. Uh, which is, uh, under case number H two-two-dash-two-zero-one. Um, now, I, on two different occasions or, or more, tonight, there was a talk about adding a, um. Uh, a, a alert. Uh, to, uh. Uh, let people know when or when they cannot enter the building. Uh, that has to be done, um, with an eye towards its certificate of appropriateness. So, uh, keep that in mind. You will have to work with staff if that is. If you are trying to add a device such as that, especially on the facade along Barrow. Um. They, you know, succinctly got to the point on this application. There are many moving parts. Um, however, I, I think that they were able to, uh, to lay it out fairly straight. Uh, we also have, uh, the benefit of the, the variances being pretty limited here. Um, the. As, uh, Mr. Harrington said, um. Uh, they are gonna comply with some of the subdivision conditions. They are meant to, uh, meet that minimum lot size requirement, which says comprehensively, uh, develop the site. Um. And regarding the granting of, uh, of, of a height variance on their larger building for the appertenance. Staff sees no detriment, um, and supports the granting of that variance. Um. Again, this, this application has received a certificate of appropriateness, and staff recommends approval.
Alright, thanks, Matt. And, uh. Yeah, I don't have a problem, uh, granting relief from that engineering comment on the, uh. Drive aisle. Anybody else? Any problems with it?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you. So I understand the motion.
Chair, would you like two, um, votes on this, or one is?
Uh. Counsel, do you want two votes on this? They're the same case number?
Uh. I, I, yeah, if we can just have two votes, it, it's a little bit of an odd duck, uh, but I, I intend on preparing two resolutions just to keep them a little bit cleaner.
Understood. Okay.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two-dash-zero-five-six, which is the preliminary and final major subdivision with C variance. For approval with staff recommendation and condition.
Second it.
Okay, a motion and mo- motion is made and seconded for the subdivision.
Okay, a motion approved with, uh, conditions. Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Uh, that was a nine, sir?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
I heard nine.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries on favor, uh, regarding the subdivision.
Alright, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion. For, to approve case P two-two-dash-zero-five-six. For preliminary and final major site plan with C variance. As presented to the board with staff recommendation and condition.
Second it.
Alright, a motion made and seconded for final site plan.
Okay, on the motion to approve conditions, Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Um. You know, looking at this plan, there's a lot of parts like you said to it, there's some revisionist stuff, but, uh. And I'm just sitting here listening and, and I'm remembering as a young teenager. Watching that whole site catch fire. And, um. And it was, uh. We, we were young, young guys standing there or seeing that whole property burn down. Uh, it's got enough, I think it's gotta be about fifty years ago. Forty years ago that happened, uh. So it's good to see that. It's not a apocalypse, maybe Monday. Another building will come up, um. Just like that corner building, that caught fire. And it renovated it back to what it used to look like. Uh, and they did a good job by the corner. Of, uh, Way Street and, uh, Arrow. Uh. Hopefully, um. It brings that piece of property back to life and not apocalypse. But so with that, I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on favor on the site plan.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Chair, I have eleven resolutions here, so I'd like to make motion to memorize the following resolution. One, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, applicant three sixty-two dash three sixty-four six-three LLC. For preliminary and final major site plan approval with C deviations. Lot coverage, stories, drive, drive aisles with. And planter box bollard requirements. Three sixty-two dash three sixty-four, Sixth Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block. Nine eight zero three, lot eights, case number. P two-one dash zero three, zero three five. Second resolution, resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two-two dash zero three nine. Applicant is four seventy-seven Mammoth SPE LLC. Address is four seventy-seven Mammoth Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. Block nine nine zero eight, lot two eight. Third resolution, resolution of this planning board of the City of Jersey City. Applicant is Mayan Properties LLC for final major site plan. Amendments approval with deviation six eighty-two, four forty. And eleven Bennett Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two zero. Two zero four zero three, lots one and two. Case number P two-two dash one five two. Fourth resolution, resolution of the planning board, the City of Jersey City approving an extension of site plan approval applicant N N J. Properties LLC for extension of site plan approval. Four twenty-eight dash four thirty-four Central Avenue, block two two zero two. Lots one and two, case number P two-one-one-five-four. Resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City applicant is eight thirty-five Favonia Avenue LLC. Preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviation. Eight thirty-three dash eight thirty-five Favonia Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. Block one zero six zero one, lot, lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight, case number is P two-one. Dash one one two. Resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City. Applicant is Zobin Mobile for preliminary and final major site plan. With C variances, sixty-one Liberty Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. Block six three zero three, lot two, case number P two-two. Dash zero six five. City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of AK four seven one LLC. Applicant, application number is P two-two dash one one six. Application for preliminary and major site plan approval with bulk variance. And design waiver exception relief. City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of AK two-five-three LLC, application number P two-two dash one one seven. Application for minor site plan approval with bulk variance and design waiver exception relief. Resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City applicant is ninety-nine Storms Development LLC. For a final major site plan amendments approval, ninety-nine Storms Avenue. Also known as ninety-nine Storms Avenue and two fifty-three Monticello Avenue. Jersey City, New Jersey, block one five zero zero three. Lot one eight zero one, also known as block one five zero three three, lots eighteen and nineteen. Case number P two-two dash one four three. Resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City approving a site plan extension. Of the amendments, of the amended preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations and conditions. Applicant thirty Journal Square Partners LLC. For approval of a five-year site plan ex- extension and the previous. Of the previously approved preliminary and final major site plan with deviations and conditions. Property thirty Journal Square Block one zero seven zero two. Lots four. Six to fifteen, that's case number P two-two dash one six seven. Final resolution, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City. Case number P two-two dash one five six for two-year extension of. Prior approval applicant and kid, John, and Angel Jane. Address is three ten Fourth Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block. One one two zero seven, lot fifteen.
Alright, thanks for your, uh, can we have a seven, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, to leave a roll call, please, Cam. Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries on favor for memorialization of resolutions. Alright, thank you, everybody. Uh, do we need an executive session, anybody?
No.
Alright, thank you, uh. For a great year, an exhausting year, and, uh. I appreciate you guys. Appreciate everybody.
We appreciate you as well.
Appreciate you guys, really. We do. Thank you.
And, uh, let's get a motion for adjournment.
Everyone have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And a happy and healthy new year.
You too, everybody.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble here. Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Alright, guys, thank you. We're done.
Happy, healthy, thanks, everybody. Good night.
Holidays.